Noting the hour, I'm calling the Acton Select Board meeting to order. And first up, we have a public forum to discuss updates and public questions about the DPW building.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're very excited to have Weston and Sampson and PMA Associates in today to present on the DPW project. They'll walk us through a presentation that takes us from the beginning to where we currently are. And we are here as well to answer any questions about the project and any information that people are looking for. With us today is John Cuomo from Weston and Sampson, who's at the podium. Behind him seated is Della Donahue from Weston and Sampson. And sitting a little bit further away is Kevin Weeks from PMA Associates. So, John, whenever you're ready.
And just in terms of format, this is meant to be a public forum, so we're going to lead with a presentation, just to give everybody the same baseline of information about where the project is today. And then the Chair will run through as many public comments and questions as we have from there on out.
Thank you.
The project team was part of, the design team was introduced, but there's also a building committee that has been part of this process. It's chaired by Dean Charter, who's also a Select Board member. Cora York, our DPW director, is on it. And there are some other volunteers from the community that also serve on that building committee, which I think we'll discuss further. There are poster boards in the back with, maybe you saw them on your way in, but there are some poster boards on the back, on the way back of the room here with relatively recent photographs of the existing conditions and some sketches of the proposed project. The slides will be presented here. It's a big screen, but I encourage folks that are in the back to get a little closer because some of them are pretty detailed. It's up to you, of course. You can sit wherever you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I apologize. It worked well in the pre-game, but didn't work when we needed it to. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is John Cuomo. I'm with Weston and Sampson, where the architect and the engineers for the design of the new DPW for the town of Acton. And I'm going to give a presentation, a little project history background and where things are today. And it's about a 10, 15-minute presentation, and I'll be happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. As John mentioned, I'm here with Kevin Weeks from PMA. He is the OPM, our owner's project manager, and Della Donahue, who is working on the project with me for Weston and Sampson. Next slide, please. So the agenda is introductions and background, why a new DPW facility, opportunities and benefits of a new DPW facility for the town, what's the project size and cost, and what are the next steps? Next slide, please. Project team, I mentioned some of the members earlier, town of Acton, Public Works Department. We've been working closely with them throughout the last year. And before that, we also did the study for the project, the town manager's office and the building committee. Again, we are the architects and engineers, Weston and Sampson. We have a consultant who's helping with sustainability related to a no fossil fuel, all-electric building for the town. PMA is the owner's project manager, and we have an independent cost estimator on the project, TCI. Next slide, please. So a little background, the town has recognized a need for a new DPW for a long time. In 2020, they identified the next steps for putting together a feasibility study to understand what the needs of the department are and to do some preliminary programming and conceptual design. After that, a Public Works Building Study Committee was formed in the Select Board in January. These are all goals followed by actions. So in January 10th of 2022, the Select Board established the DPW Study Committee. In 2022, a short-term goal was to advance the design of the DPW and prioritize the relocation of the existing fuel station. This was an enabling project to get the fuel station out of the center of the DPW site into a periphery that would allow then for further development on the site. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. If you can go back, Tom, I apologize. In pursuit of that goal, the town approved funding for the new fuel depot. They also approved funding for preliminary design of the DPW facility at May Town Meeting in 2023. Next slide, please. Long-term goal in 2023, construction of a DPW building. In July of 2023, the Select Board established a Public Works Facility Building Committee. February 2025, the town hired PMA as the owner's project manager. And in June of 2024, they interviewed a number of design firms and hired Weston and Sampson as the architect and engineer for the project. 2024, short-term goal, bring the DPW facility to Town Meeting for approval, a final design and construction funding in May of 2025. So in July 2024, Select Board voted to get the project to Town Meeting this May. September 2024, schematic design was completed, along with a schematic design cost estimate. From October to March of this year, from October 24 to March of this year, 40% design development was completed. We did a mass save energy modeling for energy rebates. We did value engineering and cost saving to bring the total project cost down from its original estimate at the schematic design level. Tomorrow is the ballot question number one to advance this to Town Meeting next Tuesday. Next slide, please. So why is, why do we need a new facility for the town of Acton? Next slide. So DPW is really the first responder. Before any of the other first responders could get on the road, the DPW is out clearing the roads of snow, ice, down trees. They have to do their job so that the fire department and police department can do their job. This department is made up of a number of different groups, divisions, the Administration and Engineering Division, Highway Division, Trees and Grounds, Fleet Maintenance. They take care of not just the DPW vehicles, but other town vehicles like the Police Department and Fire Department. And they provide support, critical support for other town services, cemetery, recreation facilities, conservation. They also host the fueling station for the town, the transfer station. They provide residential salt and sand, hazardous day drop-off. They've also had a pop-up health clinic, like during COVID, where the vaccines were administered in the DPW garage. Next slide, please. Again, first responders, snow and ice removal, windstorm hurricane cleanup, removal of road hazards, oil spills, accidents, repairs on the roads, in support of other emergency departments. Next slide, please. Some photos from the last hazardous waste day in 2024. Next slide. In this facility that's on Forest Road was constructed in 1970. It was originally meant to be a 36,000-square-foot facility. It was talked down at Town Meeting and presented at Town Meeting in 1969 as a 24,000-square-foot building with an estimated cost of $265,000, which I don't know, if you do the math, it's somewhere around $11, $12 a square foot. I'd like to get those costs today, but I think we missed the boat on that. Originally, the actual building ended up being a 19,000-square-foot building. And one of the quotes from the paper at that time, although considerable concern was expressed over the cost for the total facility, several men involved in the discussion cautioned against the construction of a facility that would no longer be adequate before it was paid for. Next slide, please. There's been pretty substantial population growth in Acton, especially when you go back to 1960 with 7,238 people. The population had doubled by 1970, the time that this facility on Forest Road opened up. I don't know if they could have even forecasted that kind of increase in population at the time, but as it turned out, the facility was in fact too small on the day that it opened. And now today, we've increased the population of Acton another 10,000, so over 24,000, which is a 62% increase since 1970 and a 232% increase since 1960. There's also with that the increase in road miles, increase in responsibilities. The size of trucks and plow attachments and other equipment has also increased. They haven't gotten smaller. If you saw a truck from 1969, it looks more like a F-350 with a plow tight to the front fender. Nowadays, that plow attachment alone is 10 feet in length. Next slide, please. All that means is that it's very difficult to get these vehicles stored inside where they belong to protect them. The building itself has passed its useful life, doesn't meet current codes. As a matter of fact, there was a report today that came in today, a number of OSHA violations. And these are OSHA violations that are due to the facility, not due to operations on the DPW's behalf. Ventilation problems, clearance issues, stuff like that, that cause unsafe work environment for the employees. Operational inefficiencies, undersized for current and future use, energy inefficient, uninsulated, single-wife CMU block walls. Those same block walls are failing structurally. Next slide, please. So I think here's some photos of some of the conditions that you can find out there. On the left photo, in the vehicle maintenance garage, there's step cracking that's due to settling. The concrete block walls are not reinforced vertically. They are reinforced horizontally, so they are not code compliant with regards to lateral and lateral forces, seismic forces. They've been hit a number of times because there's just no room in the garage. The vehicles are just tight against the wall when they park. Next slide, please. Interior environment for the employees, there's a muster room, storm training lunchroom. It's too small, you can't muster all of the employees at one time. Locker rooms are inadequate and lack female locker rooms. They've converted some of the needed space, workshop space into office space for engineering. There's issues with fume migration and noise migration from adjacent uses, such as workshops and fleet maintenance. Next slide, please. Here's some examples of storage, unsafe storage conditions, homemade mezzanines, not structurally sound, with railings and stairs that are dangerous to use. Next slide, please. Crowded, you know, no clearances. Again, on the left side, a front-end loader that is being maintained. There isn't proper clearance to lift vehicles to the full height, which is difficult for the mechanics to deal with. Fluids are stored kind of on the periphery of the garage space, not in the proper storage room. Machinery again is kind of on the periphery, wherever there's a space to put it. And parts is, again, it's on the mezzanine, the headroom clearance is less than six feet to the sprinkler piping. Next slide, please. Outdoor storage for items that really should be indoors. On the right-hand side, top right, a series of Connex kind of metal storage boxes with a membrane roof over it that stores a lot of equipment that should be indoors. Next slide, please. This is the vehicle storage garage. Now, none of these trucks have the plow attachment on them because they just won't fit. There is, I don't know if we can get that to run, Tom. There's a link to the YouTube video where the DPW kind of just gave a demonstration of what it takes to get the vehicles in the garage each afternoon, because they try very hard to bring the vehicles indoors to protect them. That's not it. There we go. That's a time lapse. This is about 9,000 square feet of storage space. And I would venture to guess that that's probably about a quarter of the number of vehicles that the department has. We did take a look during the study phase of reutilizing the existing 19,000-square-foot building. We determined that it wasn't feasible, number of reasons. It's structurally so bad off that to meet current codes, it would cost as much as building a new garage. Because the DPW is considered a first responder, they're a category four facility in terms of the structural code, which is the most stringent requirements. So if there's a hurricane, if there's an earthquake, the DPW can't fall down, just like the police station, just like the fire station. So it has pretty stringent structural codes that have to be met. The other issue would be the way that the building sits on site currently limits the ability to circulate efficiently. We would need to set up buildings so that yard operations are facing Forest Road. The goal of this facility would be to protect the Forest Road butters from noise, from fumes, from as much activity as possible by using the building as a buffer, along with the vegetative land buffer zone that's between the facility and the neighborhood now. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over to Della to talk about opportunities and benefits of a new DPW facility.
Thanks, John. So this section highlights some of the benefits and opportunities that a new proposed facility can offer. Next slide, please. Big picture, with the fleet storage being a space to park the vehicles and equipment at night, this allows the lifespan to really be maximized. These are very expensive pieces of equipment, and by storing them indoors, you can reduce the maintenance needs over the lifespan and get the most out of each piece of equipment. The new facility would comply with the building codes, energy codes, and town regulations. So the town of Acton has adopted the specialized stretch energy code, as well as a bylaw for fossil-fuel-free municipal buildings. So this proposed facility complies with both standards and regulations. The new facility would greatly support operational efficiencies in terms of administrative spaces, workshops, vehicle maintenance certainly, and again, the fleet storage. And all of these efficiencies would lend to improved emergency response times. The facility includes various multipurpose spaces for the town to use, like John had mentioned, the storage garage for pop-up clinics or hazardous waste days, a larger storage garage for the use of that space, as well as a muster training room for different types of meetings, meetings like these.
Excuse me, can I just quiet the room? Wow, sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. With the new facility, the employee training and morale will be improved, so employee retention, productivity, happiness of working in this facility for this department, for this town. There would also be improvements to the safety and health of the users. So that space that John highlighted where fumes are migrating into the offices, that's a safety and health concern that this facility is working to make sure that fumes are not migrating into occupied office spaces. And a facility like this will meet today's demands as well as those of the next 50 to 75 years. Next slide, please. Here are a few images that sort of demonstrate some of the benefits I just described. So that top-left image is an example of a muster training multipurpose room. It's a space for the staff to have a meal or take rest during a large storm event that requires them to be onsite 24/7 for the duration of the storm. There are adequate clearances for fleet maintenance spaces. The image in the top center image there is an example of a maintenance lift with adequate clearance for mechanics to work around the vehicles, store their tools and equipment to maintain and reduce issues with trip hazards and unsafe workplaces. Bottom-left image is an example of a mezzanine in the storage garage. These are large-volume spaces, so you have a lot of overhead clearance, which is a great opportunity to put in a mezzanine, which can provide storage space for currently the DPW stores, things like Christmas decorations and flags that go up at certain times of the year. So this is ample storage space beyond just their equipment, day-to-day tools and equipment. They also store a handful of other items for the town throughout the year. Like John mentioned, the layout of the facility is currently positioned where the storage garage is shielding. The operational space facing south is where all the doors to the maintenance and shop bays are. So the noise and the fumes are being shielded by the building versus facing Forest Road and becoming a noise concern for the neighbors. The facility also is utilizing renewable energy. There are a solar roof-ready opportunity for solar panels, and the facility is including geothermal wells for renewable energy. Next slide, please. Top-left image is another example of a fleet maintenance garage. There are large translucent panels for natural daylight, a well-lit space for the staff to maintain vehicles. Again, adequate space for equipment and tools to be situated with enough clearance to work around the vehicles. A wash bay is a great way to keep your vehicles clean, clear them off of corrosive materials before they get stored, again, increasing their lifespan. It's also a great way to protect the environment and maintain healthy drinking water versus it, you know, running off into our drinking supply. The bottom-middle image is an example of the storage garage layout that we're proposing. So it's a center drive aisle with angled parking on either side. It's large enough to store all of the equipment, even with a plow attached. So if you know a storm is coming, you can hook it up and then queue the trucks so they can just immediately leave the garage space. And being stored indoors, they'll start up much quicker than when they're stored outdoors and fluids freeze and you have to wait for that unproductive labor time. In this scenario, they can fire up and get right out onto the street. And the last image in the bottom-right is an example of a industry-standard fluid distribution and containment space. So this helps to prevent chemical spills and just much more efficient workflow that is safer, cleaner, more efficient. Next slide, please. So this is the idea I was describing, where all of these operational doorways are facing south toward the landfill, toward the transfer station versus Forest Road. So the layout, the orientation, is a great way to respect the neighbors and centralize all the noise and the fumes away from Forest Road. Next slide, please. This facility is also an opportunity for Acton to steward sustainable design thinking. So again, the fossil-free, fossil-fuel-free municipal bylaw, this design meets it. It complies with the bylaw with the geothermal renewable wells. We are also looking into mass save rebates to help with the costs of that type of system. And the system is very efficient, so it offers what's called a low EUI. The acronym stands for Energy Use Intensity. So by using, it's a comparison of the energy it uses versus the square footage of that space. And the geothermal system helps to meet a very low EUI, the lower the better. This facility will improve stormwater management with site design, as well as features like the wash bay, again, supporting healthier water quality. There is a possibility for pursuing LEED certification, if that is of interest by the town committees and residents, and the solar-ready roof area. It's a large facility, so there's a lot of potential for a roof solar system upwards of 460 kilowatt capacity. Next slide, please. Earlier in the year, we did a lifecycle cost analysis that compared air-source heat pumps and ground-source heat pumps. So we looked at energy modeling, what amount of energy does the facility use over the span of, I believe, 30 years? It takes into account the upfront capital costs, the operational costs over that time span, and then factoring in other incentives, the mass save incentives, as well as some tax credit opportunities that hopefully remain. The air-source heat pump table that we're looking at here is actually, while it is cheaper upfront, it does not get as many utility incentives as compared to a ground-source heat pump. So it ends up being more costly over the lifespan of the system. It also is associated with higher energy costs, as it is not as efficient, and higher greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide, please. So in contrast, the system that we are going forward with for the facility design is using geothermal wells with ground-source heat pumps. Again, when you factor in incentives like the mass save utility rebates and hopefully the federal tax credit funding opportunities, it ends up being cheaper at the end of, at the end of the day, it's cheaper than the air-source heat pumps, and it does come with reduced greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide, please. Hand it back to John.
Thank you, Della. Next slide, please. We're talking now about the size of the building and the estimated cost. So the total facility, we started this process actually about five years ago, four years ago during COVID. We performed a programming study, and we came up with a size for the facility. The first pass size was 52,000 square feet. At the end of the study, we were down to about 48,000 square feet. So it's part of the process to kind of reduce and find efficiencies and find spaces that might be combined. During that feasibility study, we developed what we call room data sheets, and they're really a diagram of each space in the building, from the janitor's closet to the muster room to a conference room to the office, and we come up with a size. So these are the building blocks that we use to put together the floor plan. It's what we kind of base this on. And we had very deliberate and productive conversations with the DPW staff to kind of ferret out what our needs and what our wants. and what our wants. And we, we're down to really needs at this point. So during the design phase, we also found more efficiencies. We got the, the footprint down about 46,000 square feet. But that left us with a total project cost in the fall of, it was too much. It was, um, I think $46 million total project cost. And we, we knew that that was not going to be tenable. So we spent the last four months really trying to bring the cost down by a number of different strategies, where we've now ended up with a base building of 42,530 square feet that we agree and the DPW agrees meets their operational requirements today without hamstringing them for, for future growth. Um, the large portion of the building, as you see at the top, is the vehicle fleet storage garage, which is over 23,000, almost 24,000 square feet. That is the cheapest space to construct on a square foot cost basis, but it provides tremendous benefit as we've been, um, describing in this presentation for the protection of, of, of the town's very expensive fleet of vehicles. I think one of these, um, dumps that's equipped, six-wheel dumps equipped for, for snow fighting can run up to $300,000 to, for new, uh, which is more than the DPW cost in 1969. Um, so if we look at the plan, on the right-hand side is the, kind of the employee facility and office area. So there's offices for the DPW director, highway supervisor, administrative staff, engineering staff, also layout tables for, for plans and storage for files, uh, file storage areas, the conference room. As you go to the, to the left in, in the orange area, that's the employee facility space. Now that's the muster room, men's and women's locker room, uh, PPE closets, uh, protective gear closets, storage areas, wet gear storage areas. We, um, as we go to the left in the green, we have workshops. There's two workshops, uh, spaces that are served by garage doors, overhead doors, and they have mezzanine spaces for storage. Um, as you go further left, fleet maintenance. So tho- those are, there's a lot of lifts there. There's welding equipment, there's compressed air, uh, there's fluid distribution reels hanging from the ceiling. And as you go to the very end, on the very end, uh, in kind of teal, I guess, is the wash bay. The wash bay currently is, we've included that as a bid alternate. It's not part of the 42,530 square foot base building. We broke that into two alternates, 1A, 1B. 1A is the footprint of the building, which we estimate to be about $750,000. 1B is the equipment and finishes inside, which is another $750,000. So it's about $1.5 million wash bay. And the reason for that is that all the materials inside are meant to resist corrosive, uh, corrosive environment. If you don't have stainless steel hardware, stainless steel ductwork, this, uh, part of the building would rust out in very short order. Next slide, please. Some, these are exonometric drawings showing kind of spatial characteristics of, of the spaces in the plan. So on the top is the vehicle storage, bottom left vehicle maintenance, and the wash bay. Next slide, please. Uh, right is employee facilities and administrative spaces, and bottom left is a cutaway of a workshop. Um, next slide, please. So this size of this building, how does it compare to other towns in the area? Kind of things that factor into the size of the facility? Number of vehicles that you need to store inside, that's, that's one of the biggest factors. Number of employees, number of divisions. Um, every town is different and every town's DPW provides a kind of a separate or a different set of services to their community. Um, Acton came in at 42,530, compares very favorably or very closely to Wayland and, um, Nor- uh, Holliston, actually. So the next slide shows a graph of where Acton sits. And what you don't want is that green line to extend kind of a, beyond the size of the building, which means that you're, often that means that the number of vehicles that you have aren't going to fit inside. Uh, Born, no, I'm sorry, Born, to call you out, but they're, they're one community that cut their vehicle storage garage during the design phase and regretted it afterwards. Um, next slide, please. Difficult to see, I, I apologize. This is a graph, and this is a chart really of bid prices going back to, I think, about 2014. And on the far left-hand side, we're in the $200 a square foot. 2018, we're up around $300 a square foot. After COVID, we went up to $600, $700 a square foot. That's about where we are today. And this is, um, we've, as a firm, Westin and Sampson is, is the, probably the best-known, um, designer of public works facilities in New England. We've designed over 50 of these facilities in the last 15 years, roughly three to, two to three a year. We, um, we've actually seen prices come down a little bit this year. Competition has started to increase. Bidding has gotten, gotten more competitive. Uh, we just opened up a set of bid documents for a project in Habbington, six general contractor bids for a combination, uh, public works and fire station. Uh, the low bid was 31 million. The average of the six bids was 32.5 million. So very tight kind of distribution of bidding right now. Hopefully that will hold. Um, next slide, please. Mentioned the value engineering effort. From the schematic design estimate to the estimate today, we were able to shave almost $9 million off the total project cost by a number of different strategies. We initially were going to phase the construction. We decided not to do that, reduce the project duration, reduce general conditions. That's it. And reduced also a considerable amount of site work. During design, we were able to come up with a way to reduce the number of geothermal wells from 40 to 30. Those wells and their associated equipment were quite expensive. So saying about $55,000 a well, and then the associated, uh, piping for those wells was, was eliminated. We reduced the base building square foot from 46,800 to 42,500. Again, the wash bay, wash bay equipment. We also have a canopy that's going to be built on the, on one side of the salt shed. That's a bid alternate. And just, uh, in terms of the construction cost coming down, that kind of ripples through the entire estimate. So we were able to also reduce a lot of contingencies to bring that cost down. Uh, next slide, please. Hard to see again, but, um, on the right is our total project cost spreadsheet. SD is schematic design, DD is design development. We got the total project cost down to 37.9 million, which is again an 8.9 million reduction. Some of the money has already been allocated for design. That was, that was allocated in 2023. Um, and then that leaves us with, what will you be asked to vote on? And I don't know if I, Tom, let me turn it over to you.
Sure. So the total project cost is 37.9 million, as, um, John had mentioned, and the previously appropriated $1.225 million was, um, removed from this project because it's already been appropriated and used for design. And then, uh, at town meeting, it'll be proposed to utilize $1.5 million from this capital stabilization account to further offset this and reduce the borrowing costs, which results in a $35,220,690 borrowing
Thank you, Tom. Uh, next steps would be tomorrow's, uh, election to, to advance the, uh, ballot question of whether to, um, I guess, override proposition two and a half?
Sure. So for tomorrow at the annual election, um, this project will appear on ballot question one, and it'll be asking residents to approve a debt exclusion, um, which will be above the two and a half, uh, proposition two and a half. Uh, after that, it'll go to town meeting where the $35,220,690 borrowing request will be, um, presented under Article 7.
Great. Now, um, next slide. I think that's our presentation for tonight, and we're open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, we have a lot of questions. Um, should we start with the public? I think we're going to, we'll just pick from the audience. Yeah. I'm used to folks coming to the, to the microphone and having a seat and...
Actually, Madam Chair, maybe John could move to the table and then, uh, people who are interested in speaking could come to the podium.
That would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, and we ask if you come to the podium, state your name and address. And we're going to limit, uh, remarks to three minutes tonight. Um, we have a lot of folks online as well, so.
Tom Peels, Willow Street. The Finance Committee has estimated, uh, or looked at the costs and they, uh, have, have not voted to approve the project. There are costs that I haven't seen estimated. And one of them is suggested by the video of the parking, uh, parade morning and evening. It's half an hour for each, uh, each round of parking. And how many employees are engaged in that? What I'm getting to is a, is a, a cost that could be estimated of the annual cost strictly of that, of that parking routine. There's another cost that I think can't be estimated but ought to be considered, which is the effect on the, um, employee retention. I'm just wondering if the, if the building, if, if it's not approved at the election and at town meeting, are other DPW departments, other towns going to, uh, start looking at Acton employees? Um, for each one we lose, what is the, uh, training time? What is the cost and experience to the town of, uh, an employee who has, has been trained in Acton's equipment and procedures?
Thank you.
I, are we answering?
So I can provide a quick answer?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. So the, in terms of the cost lost productivity, which I think you were referring to in the first question, we did calculate that. Um, if you calculate the amount of labor time taken every day for, for, uh, however many days we work a year over the life of the building, yes, it's in the, many's of millions of dollars over the life of the building.
Thank you.
And we have a spreadsheet. I think we published it online, uh, for that calculation. As, it was the Finance Committee, I think, asked a similar question. And then I think the second question Dean was about to answer, or was that the first? No. The second one were you about to answer?
Uh, the second one was about employee retention. And, um, I can't help but think that it, the facility itself right now isn't doing the town any favors in terms of employee retention. Um, especially there's no, there's no facilities for women.
Thank you. Press your button, yeah, and state your name.
Rusty Carpenter, Andrews Way. So why did the Finance Committee unanimously vote against
We have one member of the Finance Committee here.
One of the reasons is that we feel, or a role in boarding from the Finance Committee, that we feel that the town engineering staff and the staff that, where the office spaces does not need to be in that building. We feel that that could be put otherwears, otherways in town where there's tons of empty office space. So that adds quite a considerable amount of cost. We feel the timing is not right. Last year, we had a $6.6 million budget override. That's forever on your taxes. They asked us when we would approve something like this, so considerate would be in 2029. Because we did an outreach to the town, we had two meetings, and over and over and over again, the subject was the taxes are too high. This is good. It was $600 per individual home, a couple hundred dollars to condos, and that's the average-sized home. So we feel this is not the right time to be pursuing a project like this, but we're pursuing it in 2029.
I just wanted to make a quick correction that the tax, um, impact for an average single family is $274. And to a condo, it's 160.
Is this considered an override? I couldn't tell from the document. When they talked about a loan, then I saw it mention override. Is this an override or is it a loan? And is there a difference between the two?
David?
It's called a debt exclusion. So the two things, one is town meeting will authorize the borrowing. Um, and, uh, at the ballot vote, offer, authorizes what's called a debt exclusion, which allows us to service the debt outside the limits of Proposition Two and a Half.
Okay. And, uh, I hear there's going to be an override for 2027 as well. Is that
So we, we haven't gotten there yet. I, I, there's a long way to go before we're going to get there. I certainly, this is just me, not the rest of this board, not the whole town, I, that's way too early to say. Um, and anybody who's predicting that is, you know, it's just way too early to say.
So I was really surprised in the presentation that, in the talk of benefits, operational efficiencies, uh, reduction in, in, um, turnover, uh, energy efficiencies, there was not one number shared with what those were. And I guess the spreadsheet's online or something, but to me, that would be integral to a presentation. And in fact, the energy savings was not compared to the current structure. The energy savings was compared to itself, right? Two different ways of doing it as opposed to what the savings is over today. So what is the operational savings net-net per year? And what, and what does it include? Does it include reduction in turnover? Does it include just efficiencies? What does it include?
Yeah, it, there's a lot that goes into that calculation and not, not all of it is, is black and white as you may want it to be. But I think if you take all those factors together, the quantitative, you know, sort of quality of life, uh, measures, uh, in terms of productivity, yes, we can calculate, and we have calculated, the hours and what that costs us today. And then we can say, all right, we'll put that in the bank. We're not spending that in a new facility. And then put that against what it costs to build a bigger building than we have now and run a bigger building we have now. And then, yes, the electricity for that new building will be more than the small building we have now, undeniable. And so we haven't calculated that because it's not, it's not a scenario that we're proposing.
So what's the reduction in headcount as a result of the operational efficiencies?
There isn't one proposed.
So how can you have operational efficiencies if there's no reduction in headcount?
Well, I think if you look, um, at the, I think we have a very high functioning Department of Public Works. Corey York, our director, does a wonderful job, but I think there's never enough time to do the, all the work that the residents are seeking and wanting us to do. And short of adding new people, we think trying to have our existing people work more efficiently would be a good way to maximize the resources that the community invests in.
That's fine, but then there's no savings. I don't, the number doesn't, seems fictitious.
We didn't, I don't know that we're presenting this as a savings.
No, no, that there's operational savings.
Okay, sure. Agreed.
Okay, so there's no operational savings?
There's operational efficiencies created by having our workforce spend time improving roadways instead of moving vehicles. So that's a, a benefit to the community.
They're getting more work done.
Yes, more productivity.
And how much, how much more productivity, productive are they?
Would we, again, I think we have several questions, uh, that have been answered already published online. It's about a half hour a day, uh, for every employee we have, which there are 20 or, and we could, I can share that with you after. We have the full analysis that I would love to share with you.
I was just going to say, to, to meet everyone's, uh, questions, if, if we can get back to you offline, that would be great. offline, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. And what is, tell me your name again.
Ruston Carpenter. You want an email address?
Yes.
Okay, I'll come over.
Great.
This is already on the lifestyle list. I'm Al Dennison. I live at 22 Mohawk Drive, and I've lived there for about 56 or 57 years. All right? So I've got a lot of experience of what the town used to look like. I still have a garbage bucket in my backyard that I kept from the one that used to pick up garbage for nothing and use it to feed the pigs. But that being said, my background is I'm a mechanical engineer. I went to school days. I worked during the day. I went to school nights. I worked during the day. I had a family I took care of. I went to, I went to school nights. I graduated with honors with a mechanical engineering degree. I started as a clerk in the drafting room at Raytheon. And I ended up as a director, a vice president of research and development for a bunch of companies that you people all take for granted because they spend, they've, they've gotten so inbred in the system we have, we, you routinely, routinely take that stuff for granted. Now, it saves your life every single day. So I have a lot of experience with little companies, big companies, startup companies. And I'll tell you some, I've already spoken to Dave, that I have some opinions here and I'd like to share them. One is, nothing looks as good as when it's first conceived. You guys, you're doing a great job. I cannot find anything wrong with the design of these buildings. Anybody in his brain in his head is going to say, gee, I would want that because it's wonderful. It's everything we want, except you can't afford it. That's a fact. Whether you like it or not, you can't. You know, we talk about washing cars and rust and what have you. I have a 19, what, a 2017 Chevy that I keep repairing and keeping alive. Costs me about two grand a year to fix that thing. I had a hole in the side of it. They welded it up. Yes, I know somebody in the town who will weld metal on a car. They don't do that anymore. But this guy is a nice guy, and he's been in town for years. I won't give you his name, he gets too much business. My car, my car stays outside. I don't put it in the garage, not in the wintertime. Sometimes I do, but often I don't. It's just outside, and I wash it off when it needs to be washed off. I don't understand why this big enormous, you know, fascination with all this good I'd love to know, in the, in the series of votes that the town meeting had about who was going to move to the next level and how much money was going to spend, what was the actual number of people that voted for those items? Anybody know? Take any one of them and say, was it 10 people? Was it 200? Was it 1,000?
Dean?
So a couple of years ago, I made a presentation at town meeting. It was an open town meeting for the 1.25, 22 million for the design. I basically showed a similar building as what was shown to you tonight. Projected that it would be $35 million or more for the building. I don't know how many people were in the auditorium, but I know it was passed by 77%.
Okay.
So we had, I think, I think there were probably in excess of 500 people in the auditorium.
Three or 400 people, maybe.
So sir, about half a minute left.
What's that?
I'm timekeeping, half a minute left.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch some more time, okay? Because I've been here long enough and I've, I, in this town to get a few extra minutes. The, I, I sent in a note to all of you about, had anybody considered the steel fabrication buildings like they use in all of the garages that you have around here? Where they have a similar kind of problem? They got a fixed building, cars, and they got to bring them in and out. They have to have warmth. They have offices in the front. Has anybody actually looked at that to see what they would cut?
In, in point of fact, a good portion of the building you see is a steel fabricated building.
No, this is prefabbed, pre-engineered stuff. And they will do the design for you, basically for nothing.
I, I will defer to the architect, but as far as they'll design it for you for nothing, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, wait a minute. That's true. I didn't ask whether or not it was the thing to do. I asked whether anybody had actually looked at it.
I will, we did have an extensive feasibility study, and I'll defer to the architect on that.
That's like asking, well, yes, did you look at that?
We're, the, the type of building system that we're employing is a pre-engineered metal building.
What?
It's a pre-engineered metal building that we're, we're employing. It's the most economical type of building to use for this use, mainly because of the primary frames will give you long spans for the vehicle storage, no internal columns needed. You get the clear height that you need. It comes as a, a package with a weather tightness warranty for, for 40 years. So that's, that's what we're employing. It's, they won't design it for you because of the complexity of the department itself and the types of equipment and ventilation, building code requirements.
Which company did you talk to? Did you talk to one in Maryland?
Mr. Dennison, excuse me, your time is up. But, and I'm happy to have you come back, but we have a slew of people online that we have to get to.
I'm going to be here for a few more minutes.
Sir?
So, so the answer to the question is, you've talked to somebody, but you've not really talked to the company that I know of, and I suggested you talk to, who will do the design, and they claim they will. I don't know that they do, but if you've never talked to them, you don't know. These are prefab buildings. They designed it. They'll put in all the doors where you want them and the insulation. The only thing they don't do is the wiring. You're going to have to do the wiring yourself. Anyways, that's about it, I think. Oh, well, I won't bring that up. Anyways, the one other thing I want to point out to you is the dump, that's what I call it. It's an indication, you can't predict what's going to happen in the future. We all know that at one time, they were trying to seal the dump. And somebody actually remembered the dump was already sealed. And they found, what is it, five, six million dollars free cash lying around? It had already been dumped. The state had approved it. The people in here didn't know that. They didn't remember. The, the memory of the group did not have that data. And where did that money go? It went into the car fund for the, for the, for the town. Didn't go to helping the dump. They just used up that land for something else, namely solar panels. Town gets the benefit of that, and they got the benefit of all their extra money. None of us saw it. It just went into the, into the fund to do all the stuff that they wanted to do. All right, I've said my piece. I wish you the best of luck, and I, you guys have done a good job, but it's way too much money. I agree with the Finance Committee. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. And please, if we can keep our comments to three minutes. Yeah, thank you.
Katie Raymond, Robert Road. Just, if this doesn't pass tomorrow or at town meeting, what happens, like, what are the consequences right away? Is there, like, do people have to be out of that building? Will some of the deficiencies be addressed? Are, like, what, what really happens if this doesn't go forward?
Dean? Thank you.
So if, if this project is not approved, we will have to continue attempting to find solutions to an inadequate building. We'll continue to have inefficiencies. We'll continue to have OSHA and other code violations. We think that we've got the solution to the problem, and the solution to the problem was presented at town meeting, and they appropriated design funds of 1.22 million dollars to, to pursue that. I think, you know, obviously, if, if there's a failure at the ballot box and at town meeting, we will have to come up with a Plan B, but at this point, we don't have one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ken Henderson, Fort Pond Road. I'm totally confused here. What I don't understand is, I understand that the DPW needs updating. I don't understand why we have to tear down the whole building and start all over again. It's quite confusing. I had to put an addition on my house because I had extended family. The, the town would tear down my house. Instead, I just put an addition on it. So I'm really confused. We have one of the highest tax burdens in the state. We forget about the elderly that are trying to, having a tough time trying to pay their taxes. And yet, we're talking about override after override after override. It's getting ridiculous. Conkitt, I understand Conkitt's a lot cheaper than Acton, the tax burden, just the tax rate, along with all the other towns surrounding Acton, except for Maynard. Maynard's the only one that's higher. And I just feel sorry for the elderly, the people that are on fixed incomes. We're killing them, and it's not right. We can do something with the town. We can, like the gentleman before me said, we could build a steel building, you know, and put all the trucks in there, you know? And we could spend a million dollars fixing up the, the old DPW building, but that's not an option. We, we want everything brand new. I mean, I could have tore down my house because I didn't have a walk-in closet. I didn't have updated bathrooms. I had old windows, but I still put an addition on. But the town would, and we have a Finance Committee that basically said, this is a dumb idea. We can't afford it. We're taking all our reserves and we're spending it on this project. So if we have any emergency, we're, we're up the tree. So I don't understand why the town wants to do this huge project at this time. It's a bad time. We don't know what the future is. We have to take care of the elderly, and we have to do something. But it's not raising taxes, it's not the answer. So we can have a nice fancy building that people could walk through and say, isn't this beautiful? The old building is fine. It needs repair. Spend a million bucks on it. Spend another million dollars on, on a metal building. You can buy one 75 feet long by 40 feet wide for less than $700,000. So I, I just don't understand why the, the Select Board is saying, we don't care what the Finance Committee says. We're going to do it anyway. We'd like to do it anyway. And why do we have a Finance Committee then? If we don't go along with it, you know? Get rid of the Finance Committee. It, it doesn't make any sense. That's my, my, I brought some notes here, but, I mean, Conkitt, I know, is a beautiful town. They're a lot cheaper than us. I know the prices are higher for the buildings, but Littleton's are lower than us, too. And their, their values aren't as high as ours. We can't keep going on with this. We're going to hurt the people that are on fixed incomes. We have to do something about that. Give them a break. Do something. But, I mean, I'm 80 years old. I've been in town for 55 years. I seen this beautiful town. All I see now is construction. And there's always a project.
Ken, your time's up.
Let's stop with the projects. Let's try to reduce the tax burden on people. And it was a beautiful town 54 years ago. It's still a nice town, but we have to keep it that way. We can't force people out because they can't afford to live here. That's my piece.
If you can turn the mic off, please. Oh, another gentleman. John, are we, yeah.
I don't want to sound like the rest. I think most people in the town I've talked to...
If you could please identify yourself.
My name is James Kennedy. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Selectman and town manager. Excuse me for not introducing myself. 32 Ellsworth Village Road, where I don't use the town plowing or what have you. And we take care of our own plowing. We don't need any trucks, this, that, or anything. But that's beside the point. The town has gone this time too far. The override last year, you've heard other people come up here and say the same thing. It's gone too far. How is a elderly person on a fixed income going to stay in this town? Or are you going to push us out? Everybody on this board, who's for this? Are you for it? Are you for it? You? 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 Do you all live in the town? Does the town manager live in the town? No. So you have no say in this matter, as far as the taxes go. Our taxes has gone right to the roof. We can't keep doing this. We cannot do this anymore. And you're going to hear it at the meeting. So you might as well get used to it now. You got to stop it. Stop the spending. You're working on a champagne budget, and you only have a beer income.
Sorry.
That's all I got to say. Everybody has the same thing to say anyway. Why can't, where is this building going to be built? Where? Where's it going to be built? What, on what ground?
On the same ground as the current DPW.
Where is that? What are they going to do in the meantime?
Dean, do you want, yeah.
So our original plan was to attempt to do the construction phases, but it was determined, as was shown in the presentation earlier tonight, it was determined that that would have stretched the, the length of the project out, and it would have cost more. So on a temporary basis, we're going to have to move all the operations to another site, probably two other sites, and we'll probably operate in those remote locations for about 18 months.
Yeah, but where is it, where are you going to repair the equipment on?
So we've, we've identified a couple of spots where we can do repairs and where we can store the equipment.
Do we own these spots?
Pardon me?
Does the town own those spots?
They're, they're not town-owned spots. No, we'd have to rent space.
Rent space. Are there any guarantees on when this building's going to be finished?
So I think we're looking at about an 18-month construction period, depending on when we start. It looks like we'd probably be off the site for one winter, basically two summers. And when the, part of the bid documents would be guarantees as far as making sure that the project is done on time. And there'd be penalties assessed if the contractor was late.
Are there any fines assessed if they're not done on time?
There, there will be.
Will be.
You know, we...
Is that all on paper now?
Pardon me?
Is that on paper?
Well, obviously, there will be. We, the next phase of this project, if we get approval at town meeting, is to develop those bid documents, and all of that would be incorporated in those bid documents. We wouldn't be going out to bid on this until probably the fall.
All right. Now, I know I, I want to finish up. There is no reason we can not put any vehicle into a Quonset-type building to keep it away from the weather. You don't have to heat it just to keep the snow and the rain and everything else off it. Now, why do we have to go into a labored building like that for a vehicle? I don't have it for my vehicle.
So one of the things we've looked at is extending the life of the existing equipment.
That's what I'm saying. If you put it into a building that's like a Quonset hut that's protected from the weather...
And so, as you probably recall from looking at the plans that were shown...
Yeah.
The largest portion of the building is going to be, would not be air-conditioned, and it would only be heated to about 50 degrees during the winter, just enough to melt the snow off the equipment, and make sure that the diesels are ready to fire up when they have to go out. DPW deploys equipments during the winter at night, probably 30 to 40 times, so the equipment has to be ready to go. So it's not a luxurious building.
Yeah, okay, excuse me. Well, what are they doing now, as far as winter goes and what have you?
So what's, what's happening right now is, as you saw in the, in the video, we're storing some of the equipment inside. There's not enough room for all of the equipment. And the building is not in structural great condition. So we're not proposing that we purchase any more equipment. What we're proposing to do is that we're just going to adequately take care of the equipment that we've already got, as the needs of the town have increased since 1969.
Right. But as, is what I'm suggesting...
Excuse me, sir, your time is up, and I know these are good questions.
One more, one more thing.
Yep.
There is no reason we can't use a Quonset hut. And if you have to plug in vehicles, like diesel or what have you, you can do it by electrical. There's no reason for a building like this on our budget. We can't go over these, every year, we cannot go over the budget and keep on going. Next year, the school department will want to go over another override. So we got to stop someplace. All right? Thank you all.
Okay. This is the last question that we'll take tonight. We have the conversation on our agenda later on in the evening, which is DPW, that folks, if they want to stick around, can join us, if you state your name and...
Karen Dunn, Five Huron. I attended a couple of the finance listening sessions, and no one in any of them said we should have more overrides or we should spend more money. I mean, it was pretty unanimous. I mean, it was pretty unanimous that we have to learn to live within our budget. I cannot imagine that if any of you were planning something for your own homes, you'd go back to your boss and say, hey, I need more money because I need to build this garage and it needs to have these features. One lives within their means, yet we don't seem to be able to do that in our town. The fire station we built was one and a half times the cost of the one that Westford built just a year or so before that. Everything that we do is more expensive than it needs to be. We're already at net zero, which is an option that this town chose. And yet we have a geothermal well in addition. We don't need that. It is not required. We can do without. As many have said, we do not need to park all of our vehicles inside of a real structural building. I don't at home. We don't need to here. So why is everything more expensive? How do all of you represent that spending more money than we have as a town is the answer to our problems? Did no one listen to the finance listening committee notes? And did we learn nothing from the school override that passed by, what, eleven votes? And that was our schools, which very arguably, or not, but more than this, drive housing prices, or at least people will believe that, whether it does or not, not the point, and vote for it. I can't imagine that a super-duper DPW facility is going to do anything to our housing values. It's beyond our means. We don't need it and we need to learn to live within our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any online hands raised?
There are not, thirteen people online and none of them with their hands raised.
Okay. And seeing no, no one at the mic. Yeah. John? Yes, last one. Offer.
Sorry, I didn't know if you were going to take any more public comment or if that was the last one.
Is this, is there any other public comment in the room? Nope. Okay. Okay. For residents' concerns? Yes. Yeah. We have to thank Weston and Sampson for the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Joanne Berry, town moderator. I do just want to spread the word on a few things related to town meeting in case folks haven't seen it yet. First of all, I'm sure everyone knows it starts next Monday, May fifth, sixth, May sixth, I'm sorry, at seven PM, High School Auditorium. We will have overflow space in the large gym if that is needed. We will begin with.
Excuse me, Madam Moderator. It is May fifth.
It is May fif, all right.
I don't want people to be confused.
Clearly wrote down the wrong thing on my note here.
It'll be, it'll be, it'll likely be for two nights, but May fifth, probably sixth.
Yes. Starting May fifth, going to a second night, May sixth. That is my plan. We will take up Articles one first. Do the consent agenda, Articles two and fourteen through twenty-nine, and then take up Articles three through nine. Ending with the, this will include the town and school budgets plus the DPW project if it passes at the ballot tomorrow. And I will remind people, go vote tomorrow if you haven't already. Second night, we'll clear up the rest of the consent items. There's a few at the back half of the warrant and then continue on. There are three citizen petitions. There are more than that in the list, but they're alike. Some of them are alike, so we don't need to take them multiple times. And everyone should have the warrant, which I neglected to bring with me, but somebody just held up. Delivered at your house. The warrant is available on the town website. There are presentations by, on several of the articles by several of the folks down front here. I encourage everyone to go to Acton TV YouTube station to check those out. They're very informative. If you want to request a reasonable accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act, please email the manager at manager@actonmath.gov or call nine seven eight, nine two nine, six six one one by Friday, May second, at noon time. Somebody will be speaking with you about what a reasonable accommodation might be. It can't be, I don't want to go sit in the gym. It has to be a real health concern for that accommodation. Free van rides door-to-door. Call Crosstown Connect until noon on Friday at nine seven eight, eight four four, six eight oh nine. The driver will be available five thirty to ten thirty PM. So you should, you'll be able to get back and forth easily enough. If you have difficulty navigating the parking and walking all the way through the high school, through the cafeteria, all that, you have limited mobility issues, please park on the Hayward roadside, but, which is closest to the auditorium. And then there will be somebody to meet you there to check in. So if it's really difficult for you to walk, you might, if you ended up at the far end of the parking lot and then had to walk through the building and that is a barrier to you, please go around the other side and someone will assist. You have to park and then they'll assist you with checking in. On the Monday night, there will be a kid-friendly movie night in the chorus room. You do have to email to reserve for that. That's for, I think, kids over four, four and over. It's in the warrant what it is. Go ahead and do that. And then certainly a reminder to vote tomorrow. I do want to end with, a few questions came up tonight and I'm sure it will come up at other, at town meeting. Why does the finance committee and the select board disagree? What the heck? What's going on? I will tell you, it is not for lack of trying. This is a situation where reasonable people disagree. And the voters will decide. I, both boards have worked diligently to try to come to an agreement and they can't. And that, not for lack of trying. Everyone did their best. They're coming from different positions and that is fine. And now it is up to you, the voters. So go vote tomorrow and come to town meeting. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Any other residents' concerns in the room or online? No? Okay. Next is chair update. And while I don't have a, an update update, I do wanted to just read a statement that I, that I typed about my time as chair on the board. It's, sorry, you'll have to listen. It's been an incredibly insightful journey, one that has deeply impressed upon me, the unwavering commitment of our town staff. It's truly remarkable to see their dedication to the select board and to the select board's short and long-term objectives, undertaken alongside their daily responsibilities and punctuated by late nights, hoping tonight is not one of them. I've had the privilege of witnessing their tireless efforts at numerous community events, from celebratory ribbon cuttings and solemn nine eleven commemorations to the proud induction of new firefighters and the immense undertaking of bringing back our beloved July Fourth celebration after the challenges of COVID. Setting an agendas and engaging in the essential, in the essential, often unseen work of the board has broadened my perspective, offering a richer understanding of the diverse individuals who make up Acton, our stakeholders, which include homeowners, renters, business owners in Acton that may live in our town or out of town, and again, back to our dedicated town staff, including the invaluable teams in the Department of Public Works and Safety, which is police and fire. I include the Department of Public Works in this statement because tomorrow at the ballot box and at upcoming town meeting, the town will be entrusted with a critical decision. A vote for a new Department of Public Works building is a vote for the safety of our town employees and the efficiency of the essential services they provide. Yesterday's tree removal on Arlington Street highlights their rapid response. Building stone walls at Conant School in Gardner Field shows their contribution to our community's beauty. They just don't plow the roads, is what I'm getting at. Investing in a modern facility now will ensure long-term cost savings, improve response times and provide equitable working conditions for our current and future DPW workers, allowing them to serve Acton even more effectively. I can say that it has not, not only been a pleasure getting to know town staff during my time on the select board, but as chair, there is something much more up close and personal and it has been an absolute pleasure, even amidst the inevitable challenges. And I also would like to extend to my fellow, all the select board nominees, the best of luck tomorrow. John?
None for me, thanks.
Okay. Any member of minutes? Alyssa?
Thank you. I have many, since we haven't met for a few weeks. First of all, I'd like to express appreciation for the two fifty committee members for their two years of lecture series, walking tours, events at the library and Discovery Museum, coordination of gifts from the Isaac Davis descendants and also staff who worked hard submitting CPA applications, managing contracts for projects like the Isaac Davis Monument Restoration, cleaning the war, Revolutionary War monuments at Woodlawn Cemetery, the war monuments on the Town Common, the Davis Plow Exhibit in Town Hall, as well as cleaning the line of march stones, the Robbins Homesite Stone, and removing trees from Water District land in preparation for the festivities last weekend. They worked really hard to get the town looking its best. And of course, I also thank the police for making the March to Concord and the Robbins Ride event possible. The Acton Water District announced that they recently implemented a seasonal, non-essential outdoor water use restriction of one day per week. That's something that's required by our new permit and that's been in effect since April tenth. They've also signed on to a memorandum of agreement with some other communities to study the possibility of connecting to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, or MWRA. So that water authority receives water from the Quabbin and Wachusett reservoirs and also the Ware River in central and western Massachusetts and serves communities in Boston and surrounding areas. So they've signed on to this memorandum of agreement to explore this area connecting, perhaps in the future, that's with Bedford and they also anticipating signing with, they also anticipate signing with Concord, Littleton, Westford, Air, Maynard and Groton. Also, the Health Insurance Trust met on April seventeenth and the payment of runout claims is going really well. And the Health Insurance Trust approved a return of $800,000 to the district and the school, and the town. The town split is 22.55%. So that means we will be getting back $180,400. The district is creating a health insurance stabilization fund so that they can be positioned to react to fluctuations. So when more employees sign up than they anticipated for health insurance or more people than they anticipated opt out and then they need that opt out, the opt-out stipend that they get. So I just wanted to let the town know that that's what the district is doing with their larger share of that $800,000. The cemetery commissioners met last week and there's work that's going to be being done on the exterior of the Woodlawn Chapel. And town staff received a $250,000 grant that covers the majority of the project, but the commissioners are going to make up the remainder out of their available trust funds. So now, once that project is done, that entrance will be accessible. Nursing Services, Nursing Week is the week of May sixth and the Nursing Services Director announced that the Narra Park Strolls are going to be starting again on May twenty-third. That's actually a collaboration with Acton, Boxborough and Littleton. So for six weeks on Friday mornings and it's open to, to residents. I think it's at 10:00 AM, but you can find more information on the town website. And the Hazardous Waste Day, we saw a picture of that in the slide presentation, is happening at the DPW Garage, fourteen Forest Road, on Saturday, June twenty-first, from nine to 11:30. And I'm announcing it now because this is the only hazardous waste collection day that we'll have this year because the second one was cut. So if you're going to be out of town on Saturday, June twenty-first, maybe give your hazardous waste to a neighbor to take with them. And then this is not related to the town government, but the Acton Women's Club pie sale at the clubhouse at five oh four Main Street is happening Saturday, May tenth, nine AM until they're sold out and they sell out quickly. And on May seventeenth, the Garden Club is holding their plant sale at nine AM at the Red House next door, four sixty-eight Main Street. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other? David?
Thank you. I have two things completely different. First, I'd like to second what the moderator said. I attend almost all the FinCom meetings and about a month ago, I noted that, you know, just as a comment, because we were trying to work through the issues on the DPW building, that, you know, the members of the FinCom care deeply about the town and they, you know, volunteer long hours and their focus, but their focus is on, on spending. Similarly, the, the select board, we consider in everything the value for the taxpayer, everything. And, you know, we don't just spend to spend. But our focus is on operating, operating the town, right? So often, that, you know, the difference between the focus on the spending and focus, focus on the operation, you know, has us this far apart. We're able to bridge that gap. For some reason, with the DPW building, we're this far apart. And, you know, I'm not actually sure why that is, right? It just is. And, you know, that's why we're going to town meeting with a, you know, with such a gap between, between the two boards. So I just wanted to second that there's not, you know, any, you know, no one's doing anything wrong here. It's just that, you know, we're, we have different, different points of view and for some reason, in this particular instance, it's ended, ended up with a wide gulf. The second thing, completely different, I just wanted to note that the Recreation Department has a number of summer job opportunities for, for folks, in many cases, young folks. Things like lifeguard, water safety instructor, camp counselor and, and other things. So for people that need a summer job, you can go to actonmath.gov/jobs and then click on the Recreation Department link.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Couple little things. First of all, Dean and I are continuing our process of preparing to mark all the monuments that are on the corners of the land that we have with other towns and places where roads cross that boundary. We're, right now, we're in the process of contacting all the other towns to find out, you know, do they want to participate with us? And who, you know, who would they like to have come along? We're hoping to get started with our first painting maybe in the second week of May after we recover from town meeting. And if there are people out there that would like to either learn more or would like to participate, let me know. We may need to come back to the select board to approve alternates because at every, at every bound marking, there are supposed to be either two select board members or alternates that we choose. And we haven't come back to the board to suggest any alternates, but we might be doing that. So there's that piece. The other piece is, since you haven't had enough of, of, you know, Acton two fifty and. The other piece is, since you haven't had enough of, you know, Acton 250 and Concord 250, there is another chance to participate in all that, and that's on Saturday, May 17. Especially if you are able or willing to be on a bicycle, there's a, what they're calling the Minute Biker Response Ride. There's towns all across the greater Boston area converging on Concord on that morning of Saturday, May 17. It's not a, it's not an organized ride where people be riding together, you just get on your bike, find a good, safe way to get to the Concord Museum, and get there, and you'll be, you'll be, you know, recognized and welcomed and offered food. The, I think that's all I need to say, but if you want any more details, just contact me. It's a loosely organized but fun event.
So moving on to our next item, approved proposal for reuse of 3 and 13 School Street.
Thank you. So this is an item that has been discussed by the Board a few times over the last few years, and it's also on the town meeting warrant under Article 13, but as the Board knows, you approved an RFP to go back out to see if there's interest in someone purchasing 3 and 13 School Street. 3 is the old fire station, which most recently has been used for storage, but has been declared surplus, and 13 is a small municipal parking lot, which used to be pretty heavily used by commuters, but over the last few years, it's been used a lot less and has also been declared surplus by the Select Board. We did an RFP, we had a handful or more of people that were interested in the project, but ultimately, we only received one proposal that was responsive to the requirements of the RFP. It was from a company called Soma Builders, which is owned by Alex Marta. He's here if there's questions, but the proposal is, since it was the only one, there wasn't much to compare it to, but it was, it's deemed as an advantageous proposal, if you look at the comparative criteria, and so the next steps for the Board would be to determine if you want me to negotiate a purchase and sales based on the proposal that has been presented. And then the next step would be to have town meeting authorize the disposition of the parking lot parcel, and then, you know, down the road would be a closing, et cetera, and the whole permitting process that he would have to go through for any building project. But to give you an overview of the proposed use that was in the proposal, he, and he's proposed to reuse the old fire station and renovate it to keep the exterior look the way, looking the way it does now, and use it for some type of coffee shop or other commercial use. And then, on the parking lot parcel, a mixed-use development with four commercial units on the ground floor and eight, I believe, residential units above that, I believe, two-bedroom units. And he actually owns the property right next door, so he's in a unique position to be able to leverage his current property that he owns to support parking on this site. And so, as part of that, he's proposing to preserve for the public seven public parking spaces and some of the park features that are on the site today. So that's the short of it. He's here if you want to hear any more details, but we're recommending you consider approving this.
Any input from members? Discussion? Dean?
Yeah, I reviewed the proposal, and I think it ticks a lot of the boxes that I had in mind. It, I know it was a major push in previous iterations to try to develop some commercial space on the site, and this actually, I think, exceeds what I thought was going to happen. You know, properly preserving the old fire station as well and reusing that, and providing some great space for residential use, very close to a train station. I think it's a really great proposal. It would have been interesting to see some, if anybody else came forward with that or anything, but I think that, based on what I've seen, I heartily approve of the proposal.
I left out one detail of the proposal, and that is the purchase price. He's proposing to purchase it for $600,000.
David, and then Alyssa.
So both parcels, right, for $600,000?
Yes.
And I agree with Dean, I looked this over, I'm glad that there are some publicly available spaces, I think they'll be needed for the commercial space anyway here, and so I think that it, I'm glad that there's a good amount of commercial space here on the first floor, and that the 3-School Street will become some kind of eating establishment or anything. Madam Chair, could you ask these people to be quiet, please?
Excuse me, can we please quiet the room? It's hard to hear. Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to understand the sequence of events here, just to understand if what I heard you say earlier, you're asking us to purchase, I'm sorry, approve the draft purchase and sale tonight, is that right? Or am I, I'm sorry, moving you forward to draft a purchase and sale, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think that the specific ask of the Board is, do you authorize me to move forward the next step in this procurement process, which would be to finalize terms of a purchase and sales agreement? One of the terms of the purchase and sales agreement would be a contingency that town meeting approves the disposition, and there are several other components of a purchase and sales. Similar, you know, yes, so that would be, the next step would be authorizing me to move forward with that next step of the purchase and sales.
And that's good. Will we get one more look at the draft purchase and sale before the approval, or are you asking us to authorize you to go ahead and sign it when it's done, if it meets your...
I probably would want to bring it back to you.
That makes sense to me, so maybe our first meeting after town meeting, or whatever makes sense.
Yeah, it may take a little bit longer than that, but I think, I think the next step would be to work on a purchase and sales, and I think the Select Board would have to approve it, even if, so yes, Select Board would approve the purchase and sales agreement before it's finalized.
And finally, I presume that we would give, if we vote for it tonight, that we would give town meeting a sneak preview as to what the offer, not the offer was, but what the proposal is.
Yeah, absolutely. The proposal is a public record, it's in the packet tonight, so I think part of the reason that we had the bid, or the bids due on April 18th, was that so that we'd have the information for town meeting, and so in the presentation, which I believe, I think this is Fran's article at town meeting, I don't recall, you'd be able to speak to, you'd be able to speak to what is currently being considered for this parcel. I think there's a chance where the person's sales doesn't work out, and we'd have to do this over again, but that would be, what we could tell town meeting is that we did an RFP. It had these metrics that we wanted to hit, we've received one proposal that meets these metrics, and we'd like to move forward, we just need your authorization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alyssa?
Thanks. You said the proposer is here? Yes. Okay, hi. So a couple of things jumped out at me. First of all, I was pleased to see that it's a mixed use with commercial on the ground floor and residential above, and also a commercial use for the old fire station. I am concerned about the number of parking spaces here, because my recollection is that for the South Acton Village zoning, we need one and a half, and so if these seven on the, on the east, sorry, west side are public, then I'm only seeing nine for eight units in the back, and those eight spaces, not, yeah, those nine spaces, sorry, are over where there's an existing shed or garage, I don't know what to call it, the little blue building that looks like it's about to fall down. But even if it were to fall down, like my neighbor's barn, it would, the HDC would want it replaced. So those two things about parking stood out at me. Also, the shape of the building is, if I'm remembering my geometry, a parallelogram, and it's not horizontal with, parallel with the street, so that seems a little odd, and, you know, while I love little pocket parks, I guess I'm wondering if that's really a necessity, because we've got a new historic park coming at 53 River Street, we've got the park behind the fire station on School Street, we've got Jones Field around the corner, so there's lots of green parks in the area, so I'm wondering if we could maximize the site by not having so much attachment to saving that little park. And I live on School Street and drive by that, and I don't really see very many people using that park, sitting on the bench every once in a while, a couple times a year. So I'd love you to talk about the layout and the parking and maximizing the space without the park, if you would like.
So that was a very good point. If we could use that space for the building itself, we could improve or make, you know, more parking spots available. But yeah, what I propose right now would need some, would need some relief or variance. I'm not sure what it would be called for those parking spots. With that being said, I am totally open to opinions and to change that proposal. That, the building that you have there, it was just me trying to assemble something because it was, you know, I had to come up with something quickly. I have a new, not the final, but I have a new markup of the building. I have on a flash drive if you want to put it on. It was just so you have an idea of the footprint of the building, basically, but the shapes, I wouldn't get too attached to that, but it's more about the footprint of the building. But I do like your idea of maybe using that space or, you know, relocating the building within the side to create more parking spots. I think that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, being right next door, and I see that park, and like you said, I never see anyone there, so.
I also should have said, welcome to the neighborhood. My neighbors say, oh, it's a great guy, really nice, moved in. Yeah, so these are just some thoughts, and I know this isn't a finalized plan, but then one other thing that you might consider is potentially collaborating with Number Nine next door, because they're in front of the Historic District Commission, I think it's Jeans and Builders, for a plan that was already approved by the HDC for a six-unit residential. So you might be able to do something creative with the positioning of the buildings or parking or something. Thanks.
Alyssa just said what I was going to say. I just, I'll quickly add that you did such a great job. 2527 looks spectacular. It looks so warm and cozy when you drive by at night, and I'm excited about this plan. I had the same questions that Alyssa did about just the building on the site, and then it would go through HDC review too, so, and I know you've worked really well with them, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to caution folks, that piece of green space between School Street and the existing parking lot, people keep referring to it as a park, and I would caution you against referring to it as a park. I was working with the town when we created the parking area, and, you know, the space that was saved, that is now has some vegetation on it, was sort of leftover space. There was no conscious effort to make it a park, we never called it a park, we never called it a playground, it's just, it's a landscaped area at the edge of a parking lot. I caution you this because there is a section of the state constitution, Article 93, which creates all kinds of issues if you try to eliminate a park. So I would strongly suggest that we stop referring to that green space as a park. It never was, and, you know, I think that we've got the most latitude of helping the developer create something that's great if we just look at it as being landscaped areas and not a park. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm fine with proceeding with, to negotiation. I don't, I don't know if the negotiation will work out, I mean, we'll see, I think that's, you know, there's a lot of work between here and there, and I hope it works out. One question I had was, it looks like the residential apartments all require stairs, right? There's not, there's not an elevator in there, right? Okay. So yeah, so some hesitation about creating, you know, even more housing that's inaccessible to people with disabilities or with, you know, mobility issues, so I don't know if there's any way of addressing that or not, but I know it's, you know, it's something that's close to a lot of our hearts. I don't think I had any other comments or questions. It seems like, you know, you've taken a great start at figuring out what to do with that space, and you're well-positioned to do it, and, you know, I can see that you're both, you know, you're thinking on your own about, you know, possible changes and improvements, and you're very responsive to the requests that are coming in from here, so I trust that'll make it a good negotiation.
Thank you.
Questions? Do we have any public input? Any online? We're ready for the online caller?
Hi, this is Richard Keller.
Richard, if you could just maybe speak up just a tad?
A suggestion?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to second Alyssa's suggestion that you work with the 9-School Street. It would be very nice if they, if it appeared part of the sort of, and along with the part, the house that was just developed, or just repaired, I think somebody referred to that right next door, I think it's 2527, if they all felt the same way with apartments above and stores below. And related to that, I have a question. There's a house that's shown on the site plan, which prevents this project from sort of pairing up with the project at 9-School Street, and I'm wondering why that is the case, rather than having more apartments and more stores, sort of making a continuous feel for the area. And then I had one other question, that's the main thing, but one other sort of just question, you mentioned, it was mentioned there'd be a coffee shop, or hopefully a coffee shop, I think it's a great idea, at the, in the fire station, and I was just wondering what's happening upstairs, because there's a whole floor above the...
In fact, I could answer the first part. So first of all, I think the proposer here is the owner and the person that renovated the building at 25 and 27 School Street that you referenced, but the question about what's shown on the proposal, the town only owns the parking lot parcel, it does not own the 9-School Street parcel, so we aren't able to offer that, so I think what we asked the development community for was a proposal to reuse the parcels that we own, and so any partnership that is forged after that point would be welcomed, I think, as long as it's within the general framework of what's proposed here, but he wouldn't have been able to necessarily propose that, or it wouldn't have been, we were asking proposals for this parcel, so, and I think there was a second part of that question, that maybe the...
Upstairs, in the... Upstairs in the.
Oh, what, what's for the second floor?
Well, I'd like, I'd love to, to have multiple units out of that building, but the space is very little, so it would probably just be offices for the coffee shop, or maybe an extended, or a storage, or, there's a basement still that they can use for storage, but ideally, you know, I'd, I'd have a, a couple of units there, you know, a couple of commercial units, but it might be too small. And I'm not sure if we, we have the flexibility of doing that, you know, I'm not sure if, how strict I am to the proposal, but, you know, again, I'm open to ideas and, and open to discuss, and looking forward to work with you and the Historic District and all the departments that we have to collaborate with.
Thank you, Alex. Richard, did you have something to add?
I didn't get an answer as to what, why the house is on the plan rather than more apartments and store, you know, a, a longer building along the street front.
I don't, I don't, which house are you referring to?
Well, the one, I, I'm looking at the one on, online, that, you know, it's on in the, on the folder on the.
Kel, that's, that's not a parcel that's part of this, that's part of what's on offer. The town doesn't own that parcel that has that little, that little house on it.
Oh.
So, it had to just stay the way it is for now. I mean, we're encouraging that, you know, that the owner cooperate with the proposer, but we, you know, we can't, we can't enforce that.
But there is no house there now.
There's no house on it, any.
That's twenty-five and twenty-seven School Street.
Oh, okay.
Right? The, the site plan, the site plan.
Site plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Forget what I said.
Yeah. So, that building is owned by, he's, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, his building, the developer wants to build a house for himself there.
No, no, that house already existed. He, he re, he rehabbed it. I don't know if you remember, but it was in really disrepair, and he, now it's beautiful.
Yeah, twenty-five and twenty-seven, I agree, but that's, that's to the east. I'm talking about the.
Are you talking about the safety building?
No, it's, is that the safety building, the thing that's labeled on the site plan that says house? Can't be, because of the nine.
Alex, is this your, is this your plan?
So, that house on the left, that's twenty-five, twenty-seven?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is he, is he referring to the, to the garage that's on the back of my house?
I guess it may be. I'm, I'm looking at a plan that says Shipping Container Home is the title of it, floor plan.
Shipping Container Home?
It's on this town website, on your link, the link.
Might be just a file name, but.
We might have to get back to you.
There's no Shipping Container Home proposed, that I'm aware of. I think it may be just something, maybe an extra file in the, in the files. We can, we can look at that afterwards with you if you'd like.
Okay, I got that. I'm just looking at what I was, went on your agenda, and then there was a link to documents, and then the documents for three and thirteen School Street is a folder, and that's the only, that's what you get. The only plan in that, in that document is the plan that has this house to the left of, of what is a small apartment building.
Oh, I know, he's just referring to the photo. I don't think that that's a real house. I know what, what it is.
That's, is that the proposed, he's, he's talking about the proposed building?
This, this house here?
Yeah, that would be twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Okay, that would be twenty-five, twenty-seven. Yeah.
It's the east of the parking lot, which is the site we're talking.
Yes, so that's twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Proposed apartment building. It says shopping center on it, actually, not apartment building. So, maybe it's just the wrong plan.
I think it's just different labels.
Yeah. It was just, I, I put the wrong label there.
Yeah.
Well, and then there's a house to the left of that building. It says house, H O, H O U S E.
Yeah, that's twenty-five, twenty-seven School, where it says house, that's twenty-five, twenty-seven School Street.
But it can't be, because twenty-five, twenty-seven School Street is to the east of the parking lot.
That is to the east.
Yeah, that is the east.
Oh, so I'm, I'm looking at the plan upside down. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Ah, there's no north arrow, I didn't, okay. I see, okay. Forget, forget it, sorry about all this, screw up. And I agree, and I would, I would bring the building out to be towards the street, so it's a continuation of the street front.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, if you want to make a comment?
Oh, yes.
Just state your name and, and address.
Tara from Over-Mass, I agree with Kelleher, and I'm sorry he was reading the plan upside down. I've worked with him a lot, and I don't think I've ever seen him do that. I'd also like to say to Kel, if he's still listening, that this is going to go through the whole HDC process, so there'll be a lot of design discussions about that, and I hope that whatever building ends up looking as wonderful as you've done on the twenty-five, twenty-seven, whatever it is. But I actually came up here to say that I hope that the town negotiates in the deal a right of first refusal for the civil defense building, because it is, has been such an important building to the town, and once it's beautiful and renovated, we might actually want it back. It might be a great place for nonprofit or some affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it costs much to have a right of first refusal in that, in such agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, for your info. So, how are we feeling? Do we want to have more discussion, or, Jim?
Well, I would happily move that we, let's see, do we have specific words already, or is it just authorize the town manager to proceed with negotiation on this proposal?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions? Ayes are unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Alex, for coming in.
Thank you, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
What are you doing Monday night? Yeah. Town meeting, we, we can talk.
I'll be picking his brain. Number four, sewer commissioners' business, consider request from Primrose School for Sewer Connection at 457 Massachusetts Ave, Acton.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Mark Bobrowski, I'm counsel for Primrose Schools. My office is in Damon Mill Square in West Concord. I think the agenda captures our presence here tonight perfectly. We're here to ask you to consider giving us Sewer Connection at 457 Mass Ave in Acton. Primrose School is a national chain. I've been honored to be their legal representative in a slew of communities across Massachusetts where they now operate. These communities include Woburn, Andover, Mansfield, Danvers, Burlington, Natick, Sudbury, Coming Soon, and Canton, and we're currently also permitting a school, we hope, in Reading. The Sewer Connection's an important part of the process here in Acton. It's something that we'd like to know early in the game, because we're going to spend a ton of money trying to develop the site, and obviously, we don't want to do that without a definitive answer. The C, the Chief Zoning Enforcement Officer, Ms. Gueschard, and I had communications back in November. She also brought in Nina Pickering Cook, and between the two of them, they concluded that we were able to go forward with what will amount to a select board site plan review process. We also have to go through a demo delay. We've made the application, that process will probably play out over the course of the summer, depending on the capabilities of the board to consider the application. But that'll put us in a delay mode, in all likelihood, and in the meantime, we'd like to, you know, get going with engineering. Joining me is Josh Klein from Stonefield Engineering, Josh is project manager. I believe you have a, a picture, I see one there, but whether there is one you can put on the board, I'll leave up to you. In the absence, we can use the hard copy. So, I'm, I'll ask whether or not you've had a chance to hear about the project, and we can give you the five-minute or ten-minute thumbnail sketch. Would that be good? I'm going to turn it over to Josh if that's the case.
Maybe the ten-minute, we're good.
Okay, I was going to say I can do a two-minute version too. I know it's been a long evening. Good evening, Josh Klein, partner with Stonefield Engineering Design, where the site civils well as the traffic engineer for, for the applicant. We're, we're happy to kind of finally be here. It's kind of a long process to get to this point. I always kind of like to start off with, you know, the site selection process. Mr. Bobrowski kind of mentioned, you know, Primrose has been doing this for the last forty years, they have fourteen locations in New England, you know, they take a long time to select a site. They want to ensure that, you know, everything is going to work. They want to make sure the access works, they want to, want to make sure kind of the site can safely accommodate the Primrose School or the daycare, and they want to make sure in the long run, this is going to be a great investment for them. So, that, that really is what brings us here tonight, is we're, we're looking for confirmation on the, the additional sewer use credits for the project. I know in my, in our verbal, in our meetings with the previous town engineer, Chin Ray, you know, at that time, she basically stated that the town had the sewer capacity, but we would have to kind of submit a formal request, which we did, and kind of go in front of this commission for that approval. So, you know, that is the main focus, we're very comfortable, you know, that we would kind of work through the site plan approval process as part of the Dover Amendment. We've already met with Mass DOT, had a pre-application with them to kind of, in determining the driveway location, we've done test pits, we've done surveys, so, you know, the applicant has already invested a significant cost in, you know, kind of bringing in this, this great use to the town. You know, the, the layout is really driven from some of the, the constraints or challenges with the site, you know, there's some, some ledge on the site, there's a little bit of topography change, but, you know, luckily, it's a, a nice rectangular shape to fit the projects. We have kind of this access point that was kind of worked through with Mass DOT on kind of a preferred location for that, and then you enter into the site and you have kind of a nice loop parking lot. Playground area is in the, kind of in the front, and it's a, a two-story daycare building in the back. I can obviously, you know, when we go through the site plan review process, you know, our office would go through and, you know, speak to traffic, we'd prepare and submit a traffic impact study, we'd work with Mass DOT on the access, we have to meet the stormwater requirements as well, so, you know, we're prepared to kind of do all of those items. It is a, you know, significant amount of time, work, and cost, so I think we're just hoping, you know, tonight to get comfortable, to allow this applicant to move forward and, and make this investment in town. The only, the thing I'd like to kind of add is, Primrose School, I know school is in the name, but it is a daycare facility, so it is, it is not a, it's, you know, pre-K and below facility. So, it would, you know, kind of fit, I think, really well in the location. Again, I can keep it high level at this point, and we'll, we'd obviously be back here for the site plan review process.
Thank you.
Primrose is, of course, a childcare center protected by the Dover Amendment, Chapter forty-eight, Section three. And as I said, we, that's the route we've taken to permit this in other communities. Some communities even put a special permit on it, which is not legal, but we've generally played ball and gone through the process. Here, we think that, based on what Kristen told us earlier, that it would simply be a, a repeat visit for a site plan approval with you taking a hard look at the engineering aspects of it and landscaping, things of that sort. But as I said, getting a definitive answer on the sewer early will help us, will encourage us in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yep, are we, we're going to have select board comments first, thanks.
And the.
Oh, yep.
I was going to say, through the chair, just to add one more. So, we are, we currently have one sewer, just want to kind of clarify the actual request. So, we have one sewer unit for the single-family home that's on the site, and we'd be seeking an additional six sewer units to bring us up to seven. So, there's a, we did prepare a table on the second page of the memo that just kind of highlights the calculation.
So, I have a few questions. The first one I have is for staff. I saw the, the memo about our sewer capacity from Jack Troidel at Woodard and Curran, and the items that have been reserved, not the items, the projects that have been reserved, like Powder Mill Place, I did not see a mention of the Parker Street Apartments, and I wonder if that was removed already.
Yes, in November, we were notified from that company that they have decided not to pursue that memorandum of agreement, which would have provided twelve, eleven thousand gallons per day to that facility. So, that's off the table, and they're going to stick with their private septic situation.
So, the calculation that he started with, that was already off? I just didn't see it listed.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it was already off, yeah.
So, this is, this is a challenge, because I'm, Jim, you put a hat on for sewer commission, another one for select board. I am fine with, with adding these six additional units for this project. A couple of years ago, I don't think it ever came to the board, but it came to the Acton Community Housing Corporation, a thirty or thirty-one unit housing from common ground, so that would have been even more sewer units than this is proposed. And I hear from a lot of parents in town that Acton is a daycare desert. They have to leave town in order to find childcare for their children. So, it's definitely a need. So, that's my sewer commission opinion, my select board opinion, and as a former preschool employee for a number of years, I, I don't love the layout of this. The housing project saved the home and, and added on residences behind it. We have another example of an, of a historic home that's part of a daycare center, the Infant Toddler Center on Central Street, so if you're not familiar with that, and I don't know if I'm talking to the right person, you know, architect, engineer, but I would love to see that home saved. And I cannot ima, I'm not speaking for the historical commission, but I can imagine that they would not put a demo delay on this for eighteen months. That home in particular, because it's on Massachusetts Avenue, because it's near the school campus, everybody that, you know, pulls up Prospect Street, drives by it, it's, it's sort of an icon. It's like, it's known as the Raspberry and Blueberry House because of the paint colors. It's, it's stunning. I don't have any idea what condition it is in, and if there are enough historical elements left for the historical commission to say, yes, this needs to be protected, but that would surprise me if they didn't. So, I'd rather see the historic home and a daycare center, modern building added on to the back of it. As a parent and a former preschool teacher, I'd love to see the play structures behind the building, not on the road where the kids, I mean, there's vegetation there that's going to absorb some of the exhaust, but really, the kids should be playing further away from, from the street, in my, you know, in my opinion. Yes, they're protected from, from traffic by this fence, but the air that they breathe should be cleaner than being right by the road. And I guess those are all opinions, but one question that I have is, then, the, why forty parking spaces? There's two hundred people in here, how many of them are staff requiring a parking space?
So, we appreciate the feedback. Again, I think our, you know, for us to kind of continue through our, the process, we're really seeking the approval for those six credits, so we obviously are here to take the feedback. We did, there was a, a demo delay was approved and enacted in two thousand and nineteen, so the historic commission did previously approve for the building to be demoed, but we are going back in front of them, I believe on May fourteenth. In terms of kind of the layout, I think those are the feedback we can take back as a team and, and kind of look at if, if the, you know, the project is successfully able to move forward with, with the sewer. In terms of, sorry, the item was on the, the driveway?
Just the number of parking spaces.
So, forty, forty parking spaces is kind of a comfortable number. This layout, this is. This layout, this is just a conceptual plan, so the final parking number is something that we're working with. So that would all be kind of handled through the site plan review process.
Just want to follow up that I realized that this is conceptual. I figured it would be easier and less expensive if you got that feedback first, ahead of time. So I'm totally comfortable with approving the sewer. I just wanted to provide that feedback before you come before the board again with a site plan permit.
Any other? Jim, and then David, sorry.
So, yeah, we do, we do, we have more SBUs than we did a few months ago, which is good news, but there's still a precious resource. You know, there's a lot of people, a lot of parcels that have not connected yet to the sewers that are already in the sewer district. And if we imagine all of them, you know, we run low. And we are constantly, our staff are constantly trying to figure out how to, you know, increase the capacity of our wastewater management system, and it's been a challenge. There's limits there. So I, because it'll just be a site plan review later on, we won't have as much influence there. I think this is, this is our time to understand what we really want out of this project and make it clear and, you know, have that be part of what comes along with giving up of our, six of our valuable SBUs. So the thing that's getting to me as I think about this is that the town has spent tens of thousands of dollars each year for the last two years, some first with ARPA money and then with other money, subsidizing daycare. It's, it is so expensive. And having, you know, it's still good to have more market rate daycare in town, but I wonder about the possibility of working out some subsidized slots to be allocated by the Human Services Department for, you know, for spots inside this, you know, wonderfully located daycare right next to our school campus. So that was the only, that was the only requirement I was thinking about in terms of, you know, the value of an SBU. Thanks.
David?
Yes, a little bit of a follow-up to how Alyssa ended. How many staff will work at this building?
So it's typically, it'll be kind of based on the final licensing capacity of facility. So we kind of put in the memo about 25 to 30 people would be working there. So, you know, typically, we'd expect, you know, 26 to 28 kind of staff members, a director, kind of a support staff member, and then possibly like an administrative or like an administrative staff member. So, you know, one of the, you know, I think it's been mentioned, I mean, daycare is a use that's needed in this community as well as a lot of other communities. So it's, I think, important, you know, bringing in a nice daycare use, providing kind of that tax revenue. I mean, that's the, kind of the benefit of this as well. And, you know, they also will be paying the fee. So there is a fee that goes with each sewer unit. The applicant, you know, would be responsible for paying that fee as well. So that, that's that value of the, of the cost.
And John, what is the privilege fee for six SBUs? Do you know? I know what it is by bedroom, but actually, I don't know what it is here.
I thought we had calculated with Chin, didn't we?
I believe the number that Chin Ray provided us was $30,000 a unit. So I think that would just have to be verified by the, by the commission. Which is a substantial investment.
Yeah, so it would be 30,000 times six. And just also to follow on to what Jim said, would you be amenable to having a couple of the daycare slots be for low-income people?
So we'd have to talk to the applicant. So I do know that Primrose Schools does have a charitable arm, so they, I'm not expressively that familiar with that charitable arm, but that charitable arm has a foundation set up. I believe there are things in place for them to kind of help community members. So it's something we can kind of bring back to the applicant, but I know they're looking to be a good neighbor. We've worked again with Primrose kind of across the Northeast as well as beyond, and, you know, it's a, it's a great end product for the community, and I know they do kind of look to work with both employees to kind of help them if they have childcare need, and then they also do have their kind of charitable arm or their foundation as well.
Yeah, I'd maybe a little bit more specific answer, but thank you.
Thank you. So Jim, thank you for bringing that up and David for seconding it. I would also be interested in finding out if that's a possibility, but in addition to hearing from the applicant, I'd like to also hear from town council to find out if that is something that we can condition for a sewer, for a sewer connection and increase. And that is a really good question about what the sewer unit is costing, because we do have it set up as a commission by bedroom. So are we absolutely certain that it's $30,000 because the engineer said so?
Yeah, we're going through a little transition. Chin Ray left to get a big job in another community, but we're about to hire another town engineer. In the meantime, we'll work with Cory and our consulting engineers to confirm that number, but it sounds right to me. And I think to the other question, we have had MOAs established with private entities as it relates to a sewer connection, and some of the terms in those included duration, the commitment of the town, you know, we're committing to give you a sewer connection within three years or whatever year number, not permanent. If you get around to it, it would have to be a duration. And any conditions that the board wants to put forward that the applicant would agree to could be potentially part of that, and we could work on something like that. I think the asks, the specific asks is a letter or serve, which I don't know if that's a specific legal document or if it's just what we call it, but I think an MOA could serve the same purpose.
Agreed. I think we're, you know, sometimes we would see kind of a letter or serve or ability to serve is provided by utility authority to confirm they have the capacity and the ability to provide the service. So I think in this case, because of the way the bylaw is set up, that agreement or maybe even authorizing, you know, the, you know, tonight kind of authorizing that agreement to be drafted would be helpful because it would allow us to kind of continue our process. It would give kind of an opportunity for us to, I guess, finalize everything that's in it, but it would help this, you know, the property owner move or the applicant move forward. I know we're excited to get the development process going. Like I said, it takes us a long time to kind of get to this point, and, you know, we would really want to be able to kind of continue moving and clean up the property.
You may recall that with the help of attorney Pickering Cook, we negotiated an MOA for the Gallagher Connections over on Main Street. So I have that in my file, and we can perhaps dig it out and adapt it, at least as a draft to share with you.
I just wanted to add that I would be, I'm pretty much in Alyssa's camp of willing to give up the SBUs. I have a really, really sentimental soft heart for that house. I don't know if it's in Primrose's purview. I know they pretty much have a cookie cutter look to them. And I don't know if it would be possible to keep the house for maybe office use or... And I love the idea, and I didn't even think of it, of putting the playground in the back of the parcel. And I do think 40 parking spots is a lot. It seems like that it would be just folks working there that would really be utilizing the parking lot, except for drop-off and pickup. I don't know.
The, you know, the parking kind of ranges on each kind of location's demand. I mean, 40 is a, you know, kind of both from like industry standard data as well as Primrose data, you know, is a, you know, kind of a good number to hold. I wouldn't say it's, you know, overly parked, you know, based on both IT as well as Primrose data. We can definitely, you know, take a look. I, you know, I think one of the big challenge of the site is access and how the house is positioned, you know, with kind of the intersections on both sides of it. There also is a really big topography challenge here, and I think, you know, what we want to ensure is that, you know, the play areas, the parking lots, and everything is up to kind of standards and safe. Everything's on this plan is designed to be accessible, both the play areas, the buildings. So, you know, it's something that we can definitely look at, but I do want to kind of get it out there that there are a lot of unique challenges to the site from like a topography and ledge standpoint, and how that house is positioned, you know, kind of at an angle up towards the road with kind of the pool. It's hard to see that there, but there is a pool back there. It's just completely kind of abandoned. But there are some challenges that we'd have to work through. Even the slopes today in the front of the lawn are pretty excessive to, you know, what a daycare would safely have around their building. So, but we appreciate the feedback.
And as far as the demo delay that you were speaking of, did you say you had been in front of the HC?
So we have not. There was, based on the records that we pulled, in 2019, a demo permit was filed in the 18-month delay went through. That has since expired. It was just before kind of the COVID Extension Act.
Right.
So we are, we have a meeting in a few weeks to go in front of the commission and speak to the project.
Great. Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, and this kind of gets way into the weeds of the site plan. For a number of years, my wife and I, primarily my wife, owned and operated a large daycare center on Route 2A, Nagog Children's Center, which was about two-thirds of the size of the footprint, of the total square footage for this proposed site. And based on my experience there, I don't think 40 parking spaces is excessive because you do have a lot of, you know, you've got the staff, and you've got a lot of parents coming in, picking kids up, dropping them off. Usually, you know, it's not infrequent for the parent to come in, check with the staff, talk with the kids. Doesn't take too long before you've got that parking lot filled. So I certainly respect their expertise, and if they're thinking 40 is a good number, I tend to defer to them based on our experience at Nagog Children's Center. The other item that I'd raise, although I would not recuse myself from this, the house under consideration that's going to be demolished was the, my grandmother's birthplace. It's an old Davis property, and I've got sort of a sentimental attachment to it as well. However, all of us realize how much it can cost to try to fix up and preserve an old building. You know, we're dropping better than a million dollars for the one on the other side of the parking lot. So I think, you know, that might be an undue burden on the developer. So, you know, whatever you could save would be great, but I understand the situation there. Thank you.
Any other? No? John?
Oh, Tara. Oh, I, so first of all, I'm so glad, oh, Tara again, same person. I'm so glad that you guys brought up and seemed to want a subsidized childcare. So that's wicked exciting. I'm really happy that you're excited about saving the house somehow. I love that Jim brought up, and I hope you guys agree, you don't approve this until you approve the site plan permit. So it's one thing to explore things and give kind of like, you know, a sense to the board, but rather, don't, please don't approve this until you're happy with everything else. But the last thing I'm going to say is that I don't want to like have a short memory about the dog park, the factory-sized daycare, that site. The SBUs, I do not think are by right under Dover Amendment. That's the first thing. I remember sitting in a meeting when the, whatever it was called, Bright Horizons, new whatever it was called, was there and saying, oh, it's a daycare desert. And several of the members in the board said, oh, it's a daycare desert. Well, I would like the EDC to notify every small daycare in sight because I feel like the EDC is there to help protect or do what they can to support small businesses. Let them know because there was a line out the door as soon as the small daycares found out, because they would go out of business with a factory-sized daycare that would be undercutting their prices or whatever. So please just take that into consideration. And the last thing is the, that maybe the parking lot of the schools, maybe the schools will allow a curb cut in there because a curb cut of whatever 40-car parking lot, whatever it is, right in front of Prospect Street is very similar to the proposal at the dog park where it was the same size lot right in front of the exit ramp to Route 2. So anyways, I hope you don't approve this tonight, and I hope you guys can accommodate the keeping of the historic house, and I hope that the daycare get notified by the EDC to come forward if they have any concern about the town giving away the SBUs to facilitate a very large, I would say, factory-sized daycare. Thank you.
I love the idea of checking with the schools to see if you can get a curb cut in their driveway so that you don't have to have the curb cut on Mass Ave.
You can definitely, if you provide the contact, reach out. My only hesitation would be, you know, to coordinate a cross-access with a town-owned property that's also under DOT control would be a very difficult hardship for any applicant to take on.
I thought you were going to say nightmare.
So I think we're happy to reach out, but, you know, again, we've met with Mass DOT. You know, we would have to get an access permit from Mass DOT for the driveway, so, you know, we would have to kind of work through, you know, that whole process.
And in all likelihood, we'd have to get an easement, and that's a two-thirds vote at town meeting. Could be done as a license, but that doesn't take away the DOT privilege.
That easement would probably come from the school district, which doesn't involve town meeting. So that would be, I'm guessing that the school committee can vote for that easement. But, you know, you might know more about that. Anyway, it's not the town, it's the school district.
Yeah, so I would like to find out more about what the applicant says about the subsidized slots before we approve it, so I'd like to hold off on that. And I would also like, in the meantime, for you to explore, even though this is not about the, the approval for the sewer, additional sewer units is not about the site plan, whatever information you could get about an easement from the school district to use the driveway or, you know, using the existing driveway, because I know that there are slope issues here, but there's a house and a barn, and the driveway goes up behind them. If I were a daycare director, I would love to have an office inside a historic home, and there are so many really creative ways where you can connect a modern building to a historic home. Definitely check out Infant Toddler Center on Central Street because they also went to the historical commission for a demo delay and then decided that they could in fact afford to save the house that they were, or barn that they were planning to knock down in order to expand that, that center.
So I think the town manager has heard our concerns about the daycare. So I would move that we ask the manager to negotiate an agreement to serve to bring back to us. So that's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Unanimous? Any ayes? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up is approve exemption process for fossil fuel-free building requirement.
I can probably take, I can probably take the lead on this one. So lots happened since our last meeting. I've been... I've been working with staff on a couple of, of documents that are in our packet. One is a, a form for people to request a waiver. That document, if we can approve some version of that tonight, that would really help with moving the process along because then we would have defined the information we want from applicants before we consider their, their variances. So, that, that is the less complicated one. But just to give you the whole picture, the, the other document that's in the packet is a draft preliminary guidelines for our operations looking to approve variances based both on the conversations we had at our last select board meeting and things we, things that staff and I learned as we were going through the process. So, are there any general questions about, you know, what, what we're going to try to get done tonight before I go through the particulars of the documents? No? Okay. So, the first one is the, ooh, it seems to have gone away. I used to have all these things. Oh, yeah. Application for variance to fossil fuel-free bylaw. Might not be a bad idea to have that up on the, up on the screen. I don't know. Would that be possible? Okay. It's going to happen. So, this is, these are all the questions that we would want to ask, you know, standard stuff like, you know, people's name and phone, is it commercial or residential? And then it has some things that you might be surprised to see, but turn out to be pieces from the actual bylaw, like, is this project being built by a nonprofit or government-sponsored affordable housing entity? It's allowed in our bylaw that we pay attention to that. It doesn't say how we pay attention to that, but we can. We can give extra allowance if we want for affordable housing. The, the other parts of the application process are, have them, you know, check boxes about which hardships, what type of hardships they're, they're, they're looking for, looking about. And, and then a lot of room for explanation, including, you know, plans, which could be just conceptual plans. You know, in a lot of cases, people are asking for variances before they have detailed plans. That's fine, as long as we can understand what's going on. So, that, that's straightforward. This is not the actual layout of the form. In fact, the hope is that as quickly as possible, we can actually put this into OpenGov so it would be an online form. That'll be the easiest way for us to track it. If for some reason that's hard to do in the short period of time, this would be relayed out with, you know, appropriate spaces for people to answer these questions. That's probably all I have to say about the, the basic application for variance. So, Madam Chair, if you wanted to find out if there are any questions about this form?
Are there any questions about the form? No? I think it looks fairly straightforward.
I, I would be happy to move that we approve the contents of this application for variance.
David?
So, is this in the packet?
Yes, it came in kind of late.
Okay, so I, I didn't review it when I, when I went through the packet.
Did you get that motion? I'm going to second your motion, Jim.
Okay.
Just before we start talking.
And David is discussing.
Oh, so, you know, one of the issues that came up last time as an example was cultural issues. How are they dealt with in this form?
I'd say more about that in the guidelines.
But what questions would be asked here? Or are you just asking for it in the narrative?
Right. It would potentially be in the narrative that they would say, the, the nature of the, it would probably, they'd check the second-to-last box about the nature of the use requires specialty equipment that uses fossil fuels without which it could be impossible to pursue the particular use intended in the building. Now, the punchline here, which we'll get to in the second part, is that one of the pieces of research that we're in the middle of, but fairly far along, is identifying ways that people have, are successfully doing both the, the Indian-style taga cooking with, you know, where you heat the oil and, and cook the spices quickly, as well as in a wok style. People are successfully doing, doing that with electric equipment. And so, I, we may not end up needing to have a particular variance practice there. We can just tell people, you know, many people are succeeding at doing this kind of cooking without gas.
David?
That's why I'm, I'm asking about the form here. How do you get that from the form? Right? You know, if we use the standard, kind of like you're implying now, and the same standard we, that you read earlier, where it's impossible to do without, you know, do another way, you know, or it's not economically feasible, or not doable without fossil fuel equipment. Something on the form, it needs to get to that.
Yeah. It's possible that people would end up checking the other explain below box, the last of the checkboxes, and then they would describe it below.
And, and we explain on the form what you, I'm sorry, again, I didn't review these before the, the, the meeting. That we would get to this, whatever standard you're putting in place here, or whatever we do in the, so I'm a little bit worried about the chicken and egg thing here, right? And I, I'm not sure from what I read quickly when it was scrolling by, that there is enough to get at or inform someone filling out the form that the standard for this is that it can't be done another way. So, that, that's my concern, and I, if, if the form does explain that, I'm okay with it. It's just that I, by the quick scrolling, I wasn't able to get at that.
Yeah. The, the closest we have to that is a link to the actual language of the bylaw, which has, has that language written out. So, there will be a link or attachment to the waiver section of the bylaw, which talks about, you know, what, what, what things lead to the possibility of a waiver. The other thought, the other, the other thing that we talked about with staff is that we, we would assume especially at first that staff would be helpful in meeting with the applicant to fill out this form. So, they'd be able to inform them of those kind of subtleties.
Sorry, what, may I ask one last question? I think this is my last one. Why are we doing this first, or can this be revised after we do the guidelines? Right? Why wouldn't we do the guidelines first and then figure out what has to go in the form?
I'm happy to talk about the guidelines before we actually approve the form. The notion is that we would, if we could approve the form in some, in some way tonight, that allows the process to proceed. And if we have some, you know, even if we end up having to, you know, review a waiver request without formal agreed-on guidelines, at least we'd be able to get to the request because people are waiting for it.
I understand. I, I'm, I'm okay in proceeding with the vote as long as, if I'm understanding you, then when we get done with the guidelines, we could revise the form.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dean, did you want to jump in there?
Yeah, just, just a question. We're talking about, you know, for cooking purposes, and we talk about, you know, cultural awareness, or, you know, Chinese-style cooking, Indian-style cooking. You know, how about, you know, barbecue and smokers and all that kind of stuff? I, you know, it would seem to me that it would be a simple enough thing to add a checkbox to address the questions that David has asked and, and that I've added to.
Yeah, a couple of comments on that, which I think are really good points. If it's outdoor cooking equipment, as is typical with smokers and barbecues, that's not, that's explicitly excluded from the bylaw. So, people can, you know, take their propane tanks or their natural gas connection if they already have one and have something outside. So, that's already legal and not regulated. It's, the question is for the indoor, indoor cooking is really the issue. But I think it'd be a fine idea to have something in here about, you know, is, is this, you know, is, is this about, you know, cooking? So, we just, you know, have a clue. Yeah.
There are some folks with indoor barbecues, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Alyssa?
That sounds dangerous.
So, I think that the, the last two boxes, the nature of the use requires specialty equipment that uses fossil fuels, and other explained below is, is sufficient, although I understand what you're saying, David and Dean, about listing things. I think that that's clear. In terms of the guidelines, and I know that we're not there just yet, but it relates to your research that you mentioned, Jim. You said that you are finding that people are able to do that style of cooking with equipment. But the waiver that we talked about at our last meeting that was requested was somebody moving into a newly constructed home where the cooking surface was already installed. So, yes, it is possible, but you have to know that ahead of time that it needs to go in. So, I think that we're going to come across other similar requests.
Yeah, the, thank you. The solutions don't necessarily require alternate cooking surfaces. There are simple, flat-bottomed taga cookers as well as flat-bottom woks. And if you really want your wok to be, you know, hot all around, a technique that's finely, and wonderfully demonstrated on YouTube, is the use of one of those little kitchen blowtorches to just give it that last little bit of heat right before you toss the stuff in. Very exciting. So, yeah, I, there's very, very few of these solutions actually involve specialty surfaces in the cooking surface itself, except for the commercial, their commercial options. But there are little standalone, you know, little standalone units that do have that curve and actually come with a wok of the right shape. Yeah.
So, we have a motion, and so we'll go to, should we vote and then come back?
Sure. That would be fine. So, we've had, we've had a motion to approve. We had a suggestion of an, of a, an edit, which was to add something about whether this is about cooking as a, another thing you could check, which I'm fine with. And, and yeah, then we can take a vote.
All in favor? All in favor? Anyone online? No?
Sorry, there are three people online, none with their hands raised.
Thanks.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, that's part one. Part two, the slightly more complicated and interesting one, is about the proposed guidelines. So, that's also in your packet. And it starts off with just a bunch of background so that we can always, both we and people who are applying can look at this and, you know, get all the links to the bylaw, to the, to the, the mass regulations, our application to the government, to the state, and their acceptance letter. And the, the next paragraph there is just reinforcing the notion that, I think we, we went over at the last meeting, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it seems worth repeating, which is that the way the bylaw is written, the building commissioner grants or denies waivers, and then waivers can be appealed to the select board. However, the building commissioner has made the point that they want these kind of decisions to be made in public, in open meetings. So, their practice is going to be to deny variances and then immediately automatically appeal them to the select board and help the proponent, you know, fill out the, the form and get it, get it to us. We, one of the things we talked about was whether we could simplify that in some way to reduce our work burden. So, I guess there's a couple of thoughts about that. One is that the bylaw does allow us to select a, a body that would handle these requests, which could be, you know, some subset of us, or, you know, like we've done with the liquor licenses, have the chair and the, and the town manager to look them over and then bring them to us. The thought, last time I talked with staff, was it's probably too early to do that. We're, we're newly into this process. We don't know what kind of waivers we're going to get. We don't know. We don't think there're going to be that many because there haven't been that many in the whole year. But the notion, let's start with having it be a full select board discussion, and then let's figure out. You know, if we start getting a bunch that are, you know, the same, that we can, we know while we're going to decide, we could move that over to a, to a subset. Okay. Then I just, I just put in chapter 5.1. Oh, this was the other question. We were confused last time because Ed was referring to A, B, C, D, E, and F, and we only saw an A and a B. And that's just because the way things were transcribed into the application to the state, these 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5 were just relettered as C, D, E, and F. So, that, it's all the same language. So, he was looking at the same language we were, which is good. I was worried there was some like, you know, mysterious extras that, that Ed knew about that we didn't. So, then I, I put my feedback into three areas. Areas where the select board may be more likely to grant waivers, where the select board might be less likely to grant waivers, and some areas where waivers may not be needed. The last one is actually, I think, the more interesting and complicated one because this only came up today. I was rereading the bylaw over the weekend. Yeah, way at the bottom, Tom. Yeah, okay, this one. So, it appears that the bylaw already allows for extensions of existing fossil fuel heating systems, like adding new radiators, as long as the extensions don't involve new fossil fuel piping. And then I put the language right there. So, we were assuming, as was the building staff, that if you were doing a, what they call a level-two modification, you know, major change to your house, that that would trigger the, a requirement to replace all of your heating systems. Turns out, that's not true. The way the bylaw is actually written, and the way it was required to be written by the state, is that as long as you're not adding new pipes that carry fossil fuels, you can add, you know, radiators, or, you know, vents, or, you know, whatever, however your heating system happens to work. So, that, it may be that there's an, an application that was headed in our direction, a variance request, that the building commissioner may be able to resolve without having to bring to us. There are some technical issues about the HERS ratings that are necessary. I don't need to get into that. But basically, I think we won't be seeing that particular request right away. The, the other two sections above that, areas where the select board may be more likely to grant waivers, basically, I called out the commercial cooking example. And so, David raised the point that especially in cases where restaurants are not planning to renovate their kitchen area and their stoves, and they already have working stoves, and we, you know, we love supporting existing restaurants and new restaurants in Acton. That might, that was an area where I generally sent some support from the board. The less, the, the more complicated case was if they are upgrading all their, if they're, you know, changing all their cooking equipment, it seemed like, my guess is that we would want to see their analysis of how much that was going to cost them so that we could, you know, weigh out whether that made it financially infeasible for them. So, I just said, you know, we might, we might be able, we might offer a waiver in that situation, but we don't know. We'd like to look at the details. Those, that was the only real example I put in about where the board may be more likely to grant waivers. Because of my research with the cooking stuff, I listed, in, in the, some areas where the select board may be less likely to grant waivers, I, I put all the residential construction. So far, it seems like we, all-electric housing is very well-understood. People know how to do it. They know how to do it efficiently. They know how to do it affordably in most cases. And especially if we're leaving out the, the case of, you know, requiring a, a whole replacement of a heating system, that my thought was it would be unlikely to grant waivers in those situations. So, that's, that's what I put there. But these are all areas that I would love to discuss. I don't feel like we're necessarily at a point where we would approve these guidelines tonight. But, you know, if we can at least understand where we're at, that would help me work with staff to bring back me work with staff to bring back, you know, even more improved version. So I think that means I'm pausing to hear feedback.
I don't know if this is helpful, but I, I think if there's a way to make it less of a fossil fuels commissioners, you know, coming to the select board all the time, and I know that we don't have that many, try and to make the form be such that the building inspector can, can handle the bulk of them, and then for special circumstances, maybe. Is that even helpful?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is that you'd, you'd like, you'd like us to move towards a process where more things are more automatically handled, and I think that's a great goal. I just think we don't, I think we don't know yet how to do that because we haven't seen many waivers.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think that's a good goal.
David?
So I agree that that's a good, good goal, and I also agree that I think we don't want to start there, because I don't, I think we don't want to put the, the building commissioner in, in a position to make the first judgments for the waivers. I think that's a little unfair. I definitely agree with Fran that when we get to the point, if there's a certain pattern that we're seeing, that yes, we would always grant that, right? Then, you know, we would always grant that given these circumstances. We can leave it to the building commissioner to judge the circumstances, right? And so I think that's fine, but I think in the beginning, I think we'd, we'd want to see them so that we can figure out the pattern. And if it turns out to be overwhelming, then we can change. You know, we could even have a, a subcommittee, right? That's perfectly legit. You know, the subcommittee that keeps minutes and, you know, the whole thing. So, so, anyway, I, I think that, I, I think your, your proposal here is, looks pretty good, you know?
Okay, great.
So, I mean, I, you know, I think you used words like less likely and more likely, and I, I agree with those.
And I agree with the circumstances that you, you put them under.
Thank you.
Dean?
So in, in your discussion here, we talked about, you know, needing to analyze how expensive, you know, what, what becomes fiscally unsustainable. And, you know, I don't have any specific conditions I'd want to put on that, but I just caution folks that what, what you consider to be fiscally unsustainable might not be what the property owner finds to be fiscally unsustainable. I mean, it's, it's very easy to, to tell somebody how they should spend their money. So I think, you know, as this gets developed, I think people should develop a certain amounts of sensitivity and not just tell people they have to spend considerable amounts of money to do something just because you think it's a good idea. You know, we certainly heard earlier tonight people's concerns with the high cost of everything, taxes in particular, but certainly this is, to a certain extent, this is actually a tax on these folks as well if we, as a board, tell somebody that they have to do something that they feel is fiscally unsustainable. So I, I hope as we develop this thing, people will develop some sensitivity to that, that, you know, if you decide that you want to spend an endless amount of money to develop a certain, to bring in some sort of next-generation cooking surface for your house, that's fine. But I feel a little bit bad about the fact that we would be dictating to somebody else how they have to live their house, have to live their life in their house and spend their money. So I, I hope you keep that in mind as this goes forward.
Alyssa?
Along those same lines, I'm, I'm interested what kinds of sources the cost comparisons would be. Are these estimates from providers, contractors, or is this something a homeowner can do on a, on the back of a napkin, right? It's going to cost me this much more. And is there a percentage that we're looking at? You know, if it's only 10% more, you know, is that a threshold? If it's 50% more, is that the threshold? I don't feel that it's the board. I mean, obviously, the board would be granting waivers or not, but it's the town that adopted this fossil-fuel-free bylaw. And there are other, there are other circumstances where, where the town does dictate, you know, what materials people can use. You know, somebody wants to put in new windows or an addition and they live in a historic district and they've got to use wood. Ask me how I know. So, so I think, I think that Dean's point is, is a good one, that we need to, we need to be thinking really clearly. Like when the, when the CPC looks at applications for projects, they require that there be estimates that are included so that they know, okay, this number that is being presented to me by this applicant is actually a real number from a firm that does this type of work, rather than just, you know, this is going to cost me $50,000 more. Well, where do those numbers come from? So I think sources are, are critical here.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I think you have to realize that, you know, this bylaw has already scared off a number of restaurateurs that were interested in operating in Acton. At least three of them that I know of. And we don't know who else got scared off just without even dealing with the building commissioner. So I, you know, on the one hand, maybe town meeting approved this, but I think town meeting might not have been aware of the unintended consequences of this. You know, we've hired an economic development director to try to fill up the empty storefronts we have in town, and yet you've got a bylaw here which is encouraging those storefronts to remain empty.
Jim?
Yeah, I think it is important to know that, to remind ourselves that, yeah, this is, this is the law and we're, we are given some authority to, you know, provide waivers from the law, but we're not inventing the law on our own. It was passed at town meeting. But I also agree that, you know, the, the restaurant case is really where, you know, I, I feel the most torn, and it's why I felt like having published guidelines that explicitly said, yeah, we're, this, this is, this is the case where we would really like you to, you know, be asking for a waiver. Will be, I hope that'll be helpful in terms of, you know, if, if restaurants were looking at it as, you know, oh, it's this mysterious waiver process, I don't know what's going to happen, I'm just going to waste my money writing up these cost comparisons and then they're going to just say no. I think it helps to have published guidelines that say, oh, oh, you're a restaurant owner? You know, come, come talk to us. So I think that's, that's the right kind of balance to set here. The other question from, from Alyssa was about what's the level of, you know, sort of detail we'd expect on a financial analysis? And for me, there's a big difference between, you know, a commercial application and a residential application. I expect a residential application to be more like, you know, I, I looked it up and this is how much this thing is going to cost, and at least in the application, the waiver applications we have so far, it hasn't even been about cost. It's been about, you know, functionality. Can I get done what I want to get done? And, you know, I think we'll, we'll, we'll take whatever level of detail they can give us, we'll ask the building commissioner, you know, what they know, and then we'll make our best judgment. But for a commercial operation that's used to, you know, right, you know, doing projections and figuring out what things are going to cost and whether it's worth proceeding or not, I'd expect a more, I would expect we would want a, you know, a little bit more sophisticated, you know, analysis, you know? Here's, 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 here's typical costs, here's typical savings by using electricity instead of fossil fuels, et cetera, you know? And they can do the math and they can, they can tell us, you know, this, 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 you know, restaurants don't make a lot of money and they're really risky, and this would set us on the, on the, on a path towards, you know, not being able to succeed. We want to know that. Yeah.
David?
A couple, just for really little things. In many cases, I think it's not the actual cost, at least to me, right? The, if, and this is the example that I think I brought up last time. If a restaurant, you know, someone buys a restaurant and completely renovates the dining room, spends $100,000 to renovate the dining room, but doesn't touch the kitchen, I would not want to make them, no matter, you know, I don't even want them to invest the time in doing the cost comparisons. Why would we make them gut the kitchen when they weren't intending to touch it? There's a, that's completely different to me than putting it, you know, if someone takes one side or the other of the new Stop &amp; Shop and puts in a new restaurant where there's never been a kitchen, that's a different deal to me, right? Extremely different, right? If, if they're putting in a brand-new restaurant on one side or the other of Stop &amp; Shop, they have to justify to us why they have to use fossil fuels, right? But if, if they're not touching the kitchen, it seems to me that, you know, that it's almost a little bit the reverse. We shouldn't be putting an extra burden on them. So that, that's all that, anyway, I, there's a, I think I was pretty clear. And eventually, another way to approach this would be the way that we did the liquor licenses. I do think we need to get the first few in person and discuss, but maybe they can go on consult, consent, where the, we give enough guidance to the building commissioner such that he can guide the applicant in a way that, for the application that goes into our packet, we were, we're going to approve it 90% of the time, because he, he knows, he's read the guidelines and everything, and he knows what we would likely approve. And one of us wants to hold it because we see something squarely, we can do that. Or even if we just have one question, we can hold it. So that's another, another possible way to do it.
If, if others feel similarly to David, I could strengthen the language there about situations in which, you know, kitchen equipment isn't being upgraded, that even in a major renovation, we would, you know, tend to look approvingly on, on, you know, a waiver to not have to upgrade the stove equipment. Alyssa's thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me, let me strengthen that language to make that more clear.
David?
And, and maybe even to say unrelated equipment. So we have two of these restaurants just in the past year, Silver Girl and Velvet Vine, that did extensive work on their dining rooms, right? Their dining rooms are completely renovated, they don't even look very much like the old dining rooms. But as far as I know, they didn't do much kitchen work. Maybe they had to do a certain amount of health and safety kitchen work, maybe for example, the, the hood over the stove wasn't up to spec. If that's the only thing that they would have to do, again, somehow if you can get into the language, that they, we're not going to make them gut the whole kitchen because the hood was not up to scratch. So, anyway, that's, that's important to me. It may apply to other businesses, but especially restaurants.
Thank you.
I think that's all I need. I think that's all that staff was asking about. Looking, Tom, is there something else we needed to discuss that you thought from the earlier conversation?
Nope.
Okay.
We don't need to vote on the guidelines. You're going to draft them and bring them back to us.
Right, right.
Thank you.
We've had a general discussion, so I feel like we could proceed if we had a waiver application coming up. But we, let's, let's, let's get, let's get the, let's get these guidelines better before we approve them.
Thanks, Jim, for your work on this. So next up, we have approve the recommended exterior paint color for the 17 Woodbury Lane building.
This'll take, this'll take an hour, probably.
I am going to bring up the recommended paint colors and give a quick explanation as to why, and be happy to answer any questions. So we're at the point with 17 Woodbury where we're starting to pick out colors, selections for both the exterior and beginning to discuss them for the interior. And for the exterior, the intent is to try to keep this as close as possible to a Greek revival style. And full disclosure, I didn't really know what that meant until the last few weeks, so I'll be regurgitating a lot of information I've just learned. What you see in front of you is a recommended color scheme. This would be a green doors at the addition, an off-white wood siding at the addition, and you see a side detail of the new green metal wedge roof addition. The color of the building itself would be a lighter yellow than what was previously there. And the intent of that is to match this building as close as possible to Town Hall while still keeping some of its uniqueness. There are some other options, but this one is a recommended option from the town.
So is this like a pretend choice?
So this is a recommended one, but I, I'll show you the other two options that have been provided as well. The other two options, you'll see the, the building will remain white, the shutters and the metal roof will remain green. The difference here would be the sash. The sash will have a black paint, I'm sorry, I said remain white. The building will be white. The sash would be painted black here, which is not necessarily traditional for a Greek revival building. The next option would be the same, but it would be a white sash, which is more traditional. The reason why this was provided is that when, from what I understand, houses that have this, there's, there's a number of buildings and houses that have this style, and that this would work to match those. So these are the three options that have been provided by the architect and recommended by the project team.
I already know my choice.
What's a sash? Which part is the sash?
It's, it's the window ledge-ish.
It is, it's the exterior window ledge. It's the best way to explain it, but when you look at it, you'll see, essentially, it's a sill on the exterior.
Yeah.
So where this matches the trim.
We could just call it the window sill. Yeah.
Sash is more appropriate.
Exterior, yeah. But I, I'm all for the firsts. I, I like that. I like the color, yeah.
The recommended choices?
The recommended choices.
I move to approve the recommended paint selection for 17 Woodbury Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Who's on the project team?
The project team consists of myself, Andrea Rustine, members of BH+A, so the two project designers and architects, members of the construction team, Classic Construction, the owner and his site foreman, and the building commissioner, Ed Mullin. We've recently brought the new director of technology and innovation, Carl Volker, into the mix, and he's brought a, a wide range of expertise in prior projects and a good knowledge that's really made some changes in the project in the last few weeks.
Number seven, accept amended easement for Discovery Museum.
Thank you. This is a, a land inconsistency that needed to be cleared up as it relates to the Discovery Museum. I don't have a ton of background information on it, other than what's in the packet, but it is recommended by Town Council. It's something that she, she had been working on with this Discovery Museum's council for a few years, and I think we were waiting for them to get back to us, and they finally did. And this is what is needed to be approved.
Alyssa?
So as I read this, it seems to me that... So, as I read this, it seems to me that individuals can only walk over this easement when the museum is open, is that correct? Is that a correct read on this?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we wanted to have a, I'm sorry, I, I think that sounds right, but we could have, Town Council wasn't available tonight to be here, so we could make it another night when she is here.
So I would be interested in having a change to that if it's possible, because the museum's not open on Mondays, they don't open until nine every other day, they don't, they close at 4:30, except on Friday when they close at eight, so that, there's a lot of hours there that, between dawn and dusk, when people might want to get over to Great Hill, this is a pretty busy conservation land, so it seemed odd to me that it would only be when the museum is open.
Should we carry this over to another agenda? Yeah. David?
So is the purpose of this easement to allow people to park at Discovery, at Discovery Museums and use Great Hill?
Jim?
I vaguely remember this one because the Land Stewardship Committee was involved back in the day. And yes, there are, there are on the plan, there are nine so-called non-dedicated spaces, so there's not a guarantee that you'll be able to park there, but you're, you're welcome to park there without, like, you know, paying a museum admission fee and then walk in. Or you could just, you know, walk, walk in, you don't, you know, obviously you don't need a car, but, but the general intent was, you know, have a few spaces where often people could park and walk into the woods. Because people, and also people were, the trail is so well-established that people, plenty of people were coming out of Great Hill onto the, onto the, onto the Discovery Museum property, and, you know, it was sort of awkward, so it was much better to have an easement.
Alyssa?
So if it's only about parking, that's fine, you don't want people to take up those parking spaces when the museum is open, but I would also want people to be able to walk through there when it's closed. Because people do, you know, walk to their homes, to the, to the street and sidewalk, and continue on their way. Lots of places, lots of ways to get in and out of Great Hill.
Should we bring this back? Yeah. So moving on to, oh, oh, sorry, Dean, yes.
Yeah, John, I don't know how much Nina has worked on this, but I have a vague recollection that Discovery Museum got a CPC grant for some work back there some years ago, and I think some sort of an easement or something was envisioned at the time as, as the thing of value that the taxpayers would receive from Discovery Museum, so if she hasn't looked at that, maybe Nina should check with the planning department to see exactly what the wording of that was. Because I think, you know, I, I don't think it was an insubstantial amount of money that Discovery Museum got from the town, so we need to make sure that the taxpayers got the value that they were expecting.
Great. Thank you. So discuss and take position on town meeting warrant articles. I think I'm having a deja vu. So we pretty much...
Union contracts.
Yeah, yeah, union contracts, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the contracts have been settled and ratified by the labor unions. I was planning on presenting that information on Monday, I don't have it because I have to go to the finance committee with the same. But I'm happy to talk through it now if you'd want to try to make a recommendation tonight.
David?
Can you be in two places at the same time?
Yeah, I do it every year.
So you would spend 15 minutes in one and 15 minutes at the other or something? Okay.
What's your preference?
Jim?
Just going to move on to a different warrant article. I'm fine with the notion of waiting until Monday night to decide on recommending the union articles, which I'm sure I will. But the question on another article was, do we now have a name of a person who will be in the motion for the Citizens Library Trustee? Because I think we delayed affirming that article because we didn't know who all the people were.
Someone has put their name forward, which isn't the process that has been used traditionally with that group. It's usually would come from the Citizens Library Trustees themselves. So the last I checked in with the moderator on it, she was planning to do, I think, what she's done the last two years, which was sort of hold a little, or not a little, but hold an election on the floor. But we could check with her on that further, or?
We recommended 5-0, all of Article 1. For just that reason, we'd do it on town meeting floor.
Oh, great, okay, never mind then. We'll have an election and someone will be chosen. And is it true that the Citizens Library Trustees haven't tried to discuss who to recommend? Or, I mean, it's fine, I just was curious.
They have not had a discussion at a meeting, no.
Okay, great.
So I think we're pretty set on the warrant. Yep. Alyssa?
So I just have a question about who will speak for each of the citizens petitions, because I don't know that we assigned, and I know it's usually someone who voted in the majority. Sorry, I'm just trying to get there to 37.
So we did choose me for 40, and that's the only one I remember, just because it's me. Dean has 41.
Okay, so I, I have 37, 38, and 39, so I should be prepared to make a statement on our does not recommend. And then David for 40, and Dean for 41. Okay, that answers my question.
Jim?
I had this cool conversation over the weekend with David and Tom about the slides we're all putting together, and which, which template we'd use and whether we'd have the old, the old, the black and white town seal or the colored town seal. And I don't feel like we really settled that by email, so I thought I should, like, have it said out loud, because I know there's a few more of us who have to put together slide presentations.
Sure, thank you for bringing that up. We did, we settled on the black and white seal. I edited the template and added it back to the box, so when people go to load up their presentations or they need a template to pull from that, and since we're on this subject, there are three that were loaded, Article 5, 6, and 7, that will be edited to match that template as well.
Beautiful, and now I feel like I can put together my slides. Thank you.
Awesome. Alyssa?
So one more question about statements. I know that in the past, depending on the chair's preference, sometimes we will share what we have drafted. Is everybody okay with just each member going back to review meeting minutes or recordings of our discussions on those? What I'm asking is, do you trust me to go back and review to capture what the board's reasoning is for the votes that we took on the ones I'm assigned to? Yes? Suckers.
Jim?
There's usually been a practice of, you know, saying the word unanimous if it was unanimous, and not saying the word unanimous if it wasn't unanimous. That's as far as I, that's the only thing I remember, yeah. I, 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 I'm sorry.
David, no.
I think we've also tried to adjust our statement to take in the full board, you know, especially where it was very mixed. If there wasn't a lot of mixed discussion, even if it was, even if it wasn't a unanimous vote, then it's less a concern, but if there, there were different points made by different members, then that's, that's different, so. So when will we meet? Before town meeting? Are you going to call a meeting for 6 o'clock, 5:30?
Before town meeting?
Yes.
Probably 6 o'clock, yep.
That's what's already been published.
No, we haven't posted an agenda. Right?
I don't know, I'm just looking at Alyssa, she thinks in 6.
Only the posted agenda counts. So, so the, the finance committee has posted for 5:30.
Ooh.
But they may have more...
Post for 5, no.
No, I'm just guessing, confidence, but if 6 is, is fine, so I, I think if we, the only thing we know about now is the three collective bargaining articles, we can fit that in an hour.
Sorry, it's a long time, a whole year to remember these details. If one of us is giving the presentation at town meeting, we don't need to then create another statement of recommendation, correct? Or we do?
Right, it just gets blended into your presentation.
On my last slide, I usually say the select board voted unanimously, or just voted. And on one of my presentations, because other boards have voted in favor, I, I say that this is supported by the select board, the Green Advisory Board, whatever, so.
We good to move on from this? Yep, great. Approve request for building permit fee refund from Yan Ma for 51 Robbins Street.
This request is recommended by the building commissioner. I don't, I don't believe the project moved forward and the person was seeking to have the funding that he put forward for the permit view refunded.
Jim?
I move to approve the refund to Yan Ma for the building permit fee.
Second.
I wanted to catch you before you called for the, I don't object to this because the building commissioner, I think, didn't spend a lot of time here. It got denied, I think, by the ZBA. So, but in a general practice, I don't like refunding the fees because the town spends some money on them.
I agree.
And I'm a little concerned about the precedent here, because you all know that people use that, right? They'll get to someone else, and we have to be fair to everybody in the same way. So does that mean everyone who has something denied by the ZBA gets their fee refunded? I think, I'm a little concerned, I wanted to catch you before the vote was in, but, and the motion was in, but I'm, I'm just a little concerned about this, and I, I don't feel a strong need, frankly, to refund this, this money. I mean, I won't stand in front of it or something, but I, I'm very concerned about the precedent.
Alyssa?
Do we know how much time was spent? Because to me, I felt comfortable because it was a building permit fee, and there was never a building permit granted. It didn't say that it was, it was for an application, review, that sort of thing, so I don't know exactly. I'm confused by where this is in the process. To me, the building permit fee would have been for what happened after the permit was approved by the ZBA. Is that not accurate? Can we get more info from the building commissioner and wait on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I will happily withdraw my motion.
And I will withdraw my second.
Yeah.
Next up, discuss acting leadership group.
There's no outstanding business for that committee where you would need to report back as representatives, but it's been a standing item throughout the entire budget process, and we wanted to just make sure it was on there again in case there's any follow-up discussion you wanted to have before town meeting. The warrant's been published with the ALG plan, as the board asked us to put it in there, which is pretty close to what the finance committee requested. I think that was, wasn't far off there. And so is there anything else you want to talk about? I mean, we certainly can talk about the ALG process next year, starting in June, but I don't think we're ready to talk about that tonight.
David?
No, I'll, I'll just say for me as an observer, it was a little disappointing, right? That, that we weren't able to come to a full conclusion, right? I don't know, the, the communication wasn't the best this year, I don't know exactly why that is. I know, because I added up after the fact that, you know, I know one of the bones of contention was the forecast in, of budgets in the out years, and we, we forecasted, I think, 5.2% in the next year, 27, followed by 3.75%, and the select, the, the finance committee forecast 4.45%, I believe, or something like that. Anyway, if you take the four point, the R of 5.2 and the 3.75s, it turns out to be 4.4%, so a tenth off. You know, I just hope that we didn't come to consensus over a tenth, and I'm, you know, it's, it was very hard at the end, you know, and I think, you know, you know, nobody was in the mood to discuss things further. Anyway, I just wanted to express disappointment, and I'm looking forward to a fresh start next year.
I was hoping it wasn't like my being so new to the ALG process, like contributing, I, that, that, I completely think that it should live on, it's a, it's a great setup. I just was new to the game, but I felt, I think we, we would have come to consensus if the DPW project was off the model, and that it just comes down to the DPW building, and that was unfortunate. Alyssa?
I guess I think it is worth discussing a little bit tonight, instead of waiting until June, because the, the AL, the most recent ALG meeting happened the day after our board meeting, and then finance committee met and made some comments at their finance committee meeting that evening, and I was disappointed to hear, I think it was more than one member suggesting that maybe we just need to get rid of the ALG process. And there were other members who said, no, no, we're not ready for that, it's valuable, we need to hold on to it. But as we move into the discussions about the process for next year, which is going to happen in just a month or two, I think that we need to go back to a source of differing opinion between the two boards about how that group functions. There were a lot of conversations at select board, at finance committee, and even at ALG about the charter and what is supposed to happen, and what consensus is supposed, what we are supposed to reach consensus on. And, and I said this in our, in our emergency virtual meeting that we held in order to respond to a memo that came in a couple months ago that I thought that the process was, was flipped this year, and that was really frustrating. So I, I went back to the, the ALG page and the, and the charter, and this is what I read. ALG members are... ALG members are expected to fully represent the recommendations of the ALG to their boards and support the consensus. And then from the overview, it says, once a consensus has been reached, these recommendations are taken back to the boards for a vote. If voted down, each board may report back to the group, the ALG, with suggested revisions and changes. And what I saw this year was exactly the opposite, where, um, you know, we would share our thoughts with, um, with our representatives, Fran and Dean, for you to take to the ALG meeting. What I saw with the Finance Committee was a poll vote of all of the members that was usually unanimous, and then that was what was brought to ALG as sort of a firm stance. Um, and that, to me, is, is exactly flipped from, from what the process is supposed to be. And I honestly, I have not paid, um, close attention over the years to ALG that's at seven AM. I've just, you know, read about it in, in the warrant. But if that is, is how it happened, according to, you know, the, these words on the, on the ALG page and the charter and the overview, if that's how it's supposed to happen, I think we need to have that discussion and, and get back to that. If it's actually been the opposite, where the School Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee polls their members and comes with a, with a position that then they're trying to defend at ALG, fine, if that's the way it was done. But my understanding from the documents is that exactly the opposite happens. The consensus comes at, at ALG, and then those representatives go back to the three boards to, to get agreement, not, not get agreement to take to ALG.
David.
You, you're right, that's the way it used to work, uh, that, um, uh, and so there are two differences, and, and I, I wrote them down here, and that's, that's one of the ways that, I think, I completely agree, we should get back to that way of operating. And the second thing, which is really important, is ALG's role had always been to apportion revenue, not manage spending. FinCom's role is to manage spending. ALG's role is to apportion revenue between the, especially the AB district and the town, but also the Mini-Main district, but mainly the AB district and the town. And they're supposed to do that early so that the town manager and the superintendent can do their budgets along those lines. So if ALG decides that the school district is getting four and a half percent, and the town's getting four percent, or three and a half and three, or whatever it is, doesn't matter, then, um, th- that's what it's supposed to do, it should do that by Thanksgiving, so that, um, maybe in December, if we're running a little late, but to be useful, um, it, it has to make that call pretty early on. And then ALG then manages feedback from the superintendent and the, the town manager as to what's happened, right? So the, the superintendent and/or the town manager says, well, that percentage means this to the town, or this to the schools, then ALG can deal with it and adjust the, the percentages or whatever they want. But, um, it's not supposed to be that the, the ALG manages cost, that wasn't intended. And so we've, in the past two years, only come to the next year planning consensus, now, basically, you know, April or March, but we're, we need to do it before the end of the previous year to have an effect. And, um, and the other way around, I think, um, uh, I mean, I would like to see the, the, the Finance Committee, uh, more involved in the, in the costs and the budgets and things like that. And they, um, I think they're less than they used to be there. So that, that, I mean, they could be involved in whatever they want, but I think it's important that, that, that's their role, according to the charter. So, um, uh, anyway, I, I think the, uh, those two differences, the way we're, we're managing consensus and the way that, um, uh, we're managing cost rather than apportioning revenue, are the two biggest differences. And th- those have really just been in the past two years.
Jim?
I had a question for people that were more engaged, uh, in the process. It felt like this might've been the first year when w- we as a board sort of would have discussions before ALG meetings to have positions that our, that our representatives would take back. And that reflects i- this process you're talking about, Alyssa, of, of both the FinCom and Select Board sort of showing up with positions instead of, you know, w- working as ALG to find an agreement, and then, you know, going back to the boards and saying, hey, this is what we came up with, we think it's a great idea, please support it. Is that, was this the first year we did that sort of thing?
It, it was the first year that I noticed votes happening.
Mm-hmm.
But only at the FinCom meeting. We absolutely weighed in on, you know, issues. Well, here's what I'd like to see, here's what's important to me, please talk about this, you know, here's an argument for that. Um, I think that that feedback has, has happened and is appropriate, um, but a, a vote, um, where you can present, you know, nine zero or five zero, I don't think that that is appropriate to any consensus process. I, I.
Lots in a position rather than creating an opportunity for consensus.
Yeah, if you have multiple, multiple representatives who are there negotiating with multiple entities, everybody has to move and give. And if, and if one party or two parties have taken a vote of, of the folks back home to bring to the table, I don't understand how moving can happen, and it didn't happen this year. I think that, I think that, you know, what was said earlier, um, I think during member minutes, was we understood one another's position, absolutely. The, the two mediated meetings showed that. We un- we understood what one another were saying, um, and what the positions were and why. But the consensus process was not able to happen because there were those, um, positions being brought in that seemed firm because you attached a vote number to it.
David.
I think we may have done a little bit of that too, but maybe without the votes. Um, I, I think that it's, uh, um, it's important to share our impressions rather than tell the representatives what to do. And, 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 and we should take care of doing that. I mean, one of the things for, for me, for us, that we kind of have to have it here is because of OML, right? I mean, I can't, any of us can't have enough conversation to be, uh, without violating OML. So if we're gonna talk about OML, we have to do it here. So, um, um, I, so I think we should still do that, I think that's a good thing, but I think we have to make sure that we're not giving our representatives exact direction.
I didn't get that feeling, so. Are we moving, are we moving on to an update on the DPW building project?
We're almost there.
Yeah, we're, we're almost there. After hearing the presentation once again from Weston Sampson, I don't think there's a whole lot to, we can deal with. You know, we'll make the presentation. Be interesting to see how the vote goes tomorrow. Make the presentation at town meeting, put our best case forward. You know, certainly, uh, it's not a slam dunk, but, uh, we'll do the best we can. You know, I think that Town Manager's office has been great with providing, uh, the information I need to, to do a short presentation at town meeting. I'm sure the moderator would not tolerate me doing a forty-five minute presentation like Weston Sampson did, but that's kind of what you need in order to provide all of the background for people. And it's obvious from the questions from the audience that even though we provided that, some of them didn't pay any attention to it anyway because they'd already made their impressions. Well, it'll be an interesting night, but I don't think there's much more we can do. John Camo did offer to provide whatever additional information they need, uh, we need. Question for John and Tom, have we thought about having Weston Sampson present in the audience if we need technical expertise?
Well, I'm sure they would, um, be willing to make themselves available. Yeah, is that, is that, you think that's a good idea?
Well, um, we've got a, uh, tentative Public Works Building Committee meeting set for Thursday night, so maybe we can make the decision then. You might wanna give a heads up that we might need them there Monday night, but I, uh, I, I don't think that the discussion of this project is going to turn on a dime with the technical aspects of the building. It's, you know, it's larger issues than that, but maybe give them a heads up, and then we can confirm it Thursday night, uh, if the Building Committee feels that we should have some technical support there. But we'll see what happens.
Jim, and then David.
Um, can, can you remind me, uh, if the vote goes down, then is there just a simple motion to pass over that item at town meeting, or is there just needing to be some more complicated budgetary changes?
Well, if you mean the, uh, the ballot vote, so I don't think we've made that decision yet. I, I can foresee a scenario where we could not pass at the ballot, but still opt to do a presentation on town meeting floor, um, with the hope that it passes by a two-thirds majority, in which case, once we've got that vote, then we could always go back for a ballot vote later on. But I don't think we've, I don't recall that, that we have made that decision at this point, so, um, you know, I'm willing to slam my head against a wall.
Is that something we should decide tonight? No? Okay. David.
Great. I, I would encourage you to, um, do the presentation, uh, even if you decide to move to take no action at the end, because it's important to, to, that, that people know there, and, um, and maybe after take no action, there doesn't have to be further discussion. Uh, also, many, many communities will pass the, uh, town meeting article first and the ballot vote later. One of the first things I asked, I think I asked, um, the, the clerk at the end of last year, is there's n- no November vote this year in Massachusetts, right? Or no, nor a September vote, so there's no other votes to camp onto in 2025. If there was another vote to camp onto in 2025, we could've put a question there. But, um, uh, so I, I think you can just, you know, m- maybe you can bring a proposal to our pre-meeting as to the, the final thing, what we'll, we'll know there, as to whether the, the ballot votes failed or not, and whether we have a motion that says, uh, contingent on a, um, a ballot vote, um, or not, or just move to take no action. The, the, the other, I just wanna say two quick things about your, your presentation. I think it's, the thing we heard tonight from several people was, was there's just not a need, and that, to me, I don't know if that's the biggest gap between the, the proponents and opponents here, but to me, the need is just so obvious that, um, somehow we need to get that across. And to me, the need in terms of our employees, the DPW employees, it is, it, it's bad on so many levels that we're asking them to do this job without giving them what's needed to do this job, right? And so, um, a- and, you know, and not have a good place to work, and, you know, and all that. You know, I, I think we need to be concerned about the facilities for all of our employees. So I don't know how your, how much your presentation can emphasize the need and the need for our staff, um, just a, just a suggestion.
Alyssa.
So there may or may not be anybody watching at nine forty-five who still hasn't made up their mind how they'll vote tomorrow, um, but I got a couple of questions that I didn't hear answered tonight. One was, um, I know that our roof is gonna be solar-ready, um, but somebody wanted to know, um, if we contract for solar installation, will it require a battery storage unit? If anybody knows the answer to that, I don't know if that happened at the fire station or not.
That's typically a matter of negotiation, and so you can get a better rate when you sell the electricity if you have a battery than if you don't. So, but there's no legal requirement or anything else to do that, but you won't get as much money back from the, the electricity because it's less flexible for the power company.
So maybe, maybe not, is the answer. And then the other question, um, may have been answered by staff, I don't know if, uh, this person emailed it in, but, um, it's been mentioned more than once that, you know, why can't we rent office space for the office staff on site? Um, I think we heard tonight from the architect and engineers that they looked during the feasibility study at this building, and it cannot be renovated because it will cost more than it would cost just to replace the building. I mean, it could be renovated, but why would we spend more money than getting a new building? But I guess I'm just wondering, what would that mean for operations? You know, if, if the office and, you know, muster room were someplace else, does that mean that the, the crew arrives to muster, and then they have to drive over to the garage at fourteen Forest Road to get into their snowplows and then deploy from there? Is that what we're talking about? I, I mean, I understand on an intuitive level why a- everybody that works in this, um, department should be on, on this, in the same place, and we've solved other staff, um, morale and retention and recruitment issues by thinking more carefully about where staff are located, but just a comment for anybody out there who's listening about why we need everybody right there together.
Dean.
So most of the discussion that I've heard is not so much about, you know, the lunchroom, the muster room, locker rooms for the crew, but it's kind of focused on the engineering department. You know, if you decided to have a locker room and lunchroom in a different location than where the trucks are stored, um, you've got the situation, first off, you know, you've got an entire crew that's gonna show up someplace, get started, then they're gonna have to drive someplace else, so you've lost all of that additional time of them moving from, you know. So you decide to move into an old fire station, for instance, and have that the locker room for the highway department. It used the West Acton Fire Station as an example. Then you still gotta move those people to that other location, and you're gonna be paying for their fuel, you're gonna be paying for their time. Right now, we've got a situation where, for years, I argued that the work crew should stay on the job site and eat their lunch in their trucks at lunchtime, and just come back at the end of the day, as is frequent in the private sector. However, it was pointed out to me that if you do that, you end up having to pay everybody a half hour overtime because if they're sitting in a town truck while they're eating their lunch, they're technically on the job, so you end up, so there's no way to get these folks to commute for free. Engineering department is something else, and, you know, we've seen a number of iterations with moving engineers around, but it's frankly not very efficient. There's a loss of continuity, a loss of, you know, it's one thing for the DPW director to walk next door to the next office to talk with an engineer, and it's another to get into a car and drive to, say, the Red House, which was a situation we had in the past. For a number of years, we had the engineering department here in this building. Well, the highway crew was down at fourteen Forest Road, and I saw firsthand a lack of efficiency and supervision, and it was like there were two separate warring entities between engineering and highway, and there was just so much miscommunication that was going on, so it just, it doesn't work. It's kind of like having your kitchen staff in one location and having your waiters and servers, uh, and servers a half a mile away. It just doesn't work. So, I mean, that's, yeah, you could, for a while, we had the engineering department was moved up to Agog Park. And that was a, you know, did not work very efficiently as well. It really helps if you're, if you're working closely to somebody, it helps if you can actually sit beside them or look at a set, look at a set of plans and understand these things and work them out as opposed to doing it all on email. This is why most entities are requiring folks to come back to the office, so that they're all in one place so they can collaborate.
I remember when building was in Agog, the land use, it was, it only worked because you knew it was temporary. It was so, it was awkward.
There's a couple other things that I wanted to, yeah, let me, let me finish. So thank you for that, Dean. Hopefully, people will, will hear that answer. Another thing that I heard tonight was, you know, you can't just keep adding to our taxes. And I think it's important to point out that the debt exclusion for the schools, the junior high and senior high, rolled off, you know, in case anybody has not yet heard that. And I just checked the ALG spreadsheet, and that was 1.5 million in that line. And then the DPW debt service is 2.1. So, you know, we just rolled that off. So we're not just adding on, we're removing debt that's paid off and adding on something that we need. And I also heard a lot tonight about how the town seems to need, you know, new shiny fancy things. But, you know, looking at their other, Weston and Sampson's other projects for DPW, new buildings, yes, they're shiny because they're new, but it's not because they're excessive or extravagant. It's just because it's a new building. And, you know, people are sharing information about projects in other towns. And when I look at the feasibility studies, the needs assessments, and the, and the numbers that they send out for bid, they're identical to our square footage cost. So, you know, yes, Harvard is looking at a DPW building or maybe just finished it, but their bid for 2024 was 10 million, but it's, you know, a third of the size. They have a population that's, you know, a third of Acton. The square footage is $696, and ours is 700. So no matter, you know, what project, and theirs was actually partially renovation and partial new construction. So it wasn't even all new construction. It still costs the same per square foot. So I think it's really important for people to understand that this project is what the town needs and nothing more. There's nothing extra here.
Dean?
Yeah, I think the other thing I'd like to respond to, which was brought up this evening, and I've heard it from other folks, folks that live in condominium developments, and they say, well, we don't need the highway department because we plow our own roads. Well, yeah, okay. I plow my own driveway, but I can't go very far unless the road is open. So, yeah, the fact that, you know, you've, whether you're in a small condominium development or a large one, yeah, that's kind of the things you have to do with your HOA fees, plow those private driveways. But you really can't get very far unless the public roads are open. And that's something the highway department does, and folks should realize that. It's kind of like, you know, people say, well, I don't know why I need a library because I can buy my own books from Amazon and I can just sit in my living room and read them. Well, yeah, okay, you can do that. But if you want to have a larger collection, you should have a public library. You know, everybody can take a Red Cross course to learn how to, you know, put on a Band-Aid, but at some point, you're probably going to need an ambulance. So you need those things. These are sort of essential services. And whether you're in a six-house condominium development or one with 200 units, at some point, you have to leave your little fortress. And in order to do that, you need public roads.
David?
Two quick, try to be very quick. I did an analysis of the office staff for myself just to, and there are certain of the office staff that really cannot be separated from the crews, the superintendent, deputy superintendent, tree ward, people like that. They just have to be the same place where the crews are. They're integral to the crews. But they have offices because they have direct reports and they have other things. They have paperwork. So they kind of, we need some offices there. There are other people that could conceivably be remote, but at a cost of efficiency. And to me, why would we start there, right? If, if we grow in the future and, you know, this building lasts 55 years like the last one, yeah, maybe at the end, we might be squishing people together or, I don't know, moving some of them off. But why would we start with an inadequate building? I can't imagine going back to town meeting in, you know, just a few short years and saying, you know, we saved you $3 million, you know, way back in 2025, but the building is really not adequate. We need to build another building. You know, we need to build a big addition or whatever it is. I mean, that would be unbelievable to me, right? That's, would be malpractice on our parts to try to convince the town to build an inadequate building. Thank you.
So moving on to number 12, discuss town manager review. So I was just going to say that we all have our little compiled notes from Mary Ann. And I may have changed some wording in some of the, some of the entries a little bit, but also attached is the spreadsheet. I think we've used in the past the numeric spreadsheet. And I think that's, that's really all I have to say. Should I read the report? No. Yep.
You got a good report card, Mr. Manager.
You go above and beyond. Every year, it gets better, in my opinion. Dean?
Yeah, you know, noting that some of the comments, I think I was probably John's fiercest critic through the process. And, you know, I've had the unique opportunity to work with probably seven different town managers, and I, unquestionably, we've got the best right now.
It's true.
What is, what's next in this process?
So I think we just, we have to approve.
Contract.
Yeah, the contract.
At another meeting?
We approve the contract at another meeting. Is that right? Sorry, John.
Assuming you want to have me back for three more years, yes. I would, I would love the opportunity to have a contract renewal, maybe Monday if you're up to it.
Yeah.
I appreciate the report card, the review instrument. I take your feedback very seriously. And I appreciate the time you took to, to do that and give me some, some pointers on areas of improvement and also help me highlight some of the great work that this organization does with the, with the wonderful and professional staff that we have in, in the office here with Tom and Lisa and Onjiko and everyone that works in Mary Ann in our office, but also every department, where we kind of have an all-star cast. And as we, you know, some people have moved on and we've brought in more all-stars, and we're going to continue to do that. And so I think any, any of the good remarks that I have in my review is a reflection of the people that work here and also the support and direction I get from the board members. So I appreciate that as well. And I look forward to more, you know, coming back next year, I guess. Thanks.
You do want to come back, don't you? Item for next Monday is the, to approve John's contract. Right? Yep. Jim?
I'm remembering, it was the most awkward part of being the chair, was the, the meeting where I sat down with John and, you know, said, well, you know, let's, you know, let's talk about the money and where it goes and what the allowances are. And in case you have, and just in case you haven't had that conversation yet, I leaned very heavily both on Mary Ann and, you know, any advice I could find anywhere. It was such a role strain. It was so odd to be in that position. So just, you know, and he's done it a lot of times, but, you know, it'll be, it's new for all the chairs. So just good luck with that part, if you haven't done it already.
David?
As I remember, the details of the contract, we discuss in executive session, do we not?
Yes.
And so I think we are not going to have time Monday, right? You know, I don't want to be time limited in this discussion, right? And I assume the contract goes to the end of the fiscal year, right?
So we don't have to do it Monday?
We could do, and we have a meeting the following Monday. We have a meeting the 12th.
Does that work, John? Does that work for you? Yeah.
I would prefer not to be, you know, and to have the executive session scheduled.
Okay.
And however you want to schedule it, you know, and that kind of thing. So that would make more sense to me. You know, I don't, I don't want to be in, in contest between some last minute thing for town meeting and, and the contract.
Sounds good. Good. Excellent. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And Tom. Moving on to consent. 13, approved meeting minutes, April 7, 2025. 14, approved farmer's market winery license application from Aronnapp Sellers for 2025 Acton Boxborough Farmer's Market at 19 Elm Street. 15, approved farmer's market winery license application from Pony Shack Cider Incorporated for the 2025 Acton Boxborough Farmer's Market at 19 Elm Street. 16, approve a multi, multiple one-day malt and wine license application from DAG Concessions, DBA Boston Events at Narrow Park on June 20, July 11, 18, and 25, August 1, 8, and 15, 2025. 17, approve an all-alcoholic beverage license application from Carnegie Mellon University Boston Network at Narrow Park Picnic Pavilion on July 26, 2025.
I'd like to hold that one.
18, approve a malt and wine license application from Savillard Light Opera Company at 257 Great Road on May 21, 2025. Accepted donation of $250 from Anne Cadillac to be deposited in the Acton 250 Celebration Account. Accepted donation of $515 from Stephen Trimble from proceeds of Acton 250 merchandise sales to be deposited in the Acton 250th Celebration Account.
I move to approve consent items 13 through 16 inclusive and 18, 19, and 20.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any nays?
So I had just had a quick question. I don't ever recall having an all-alcoholic beverage license at Narrow. There have been. I didn't realize nonprofits drank more than commercial people. Oh, okay. Interesting. I move to approve consent item 17.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.